Okay, Mr. Marshall, I see it's 6:33. You have a quorum of planning board members. Amherst Media is with us here. You look good to go to me.
All right, thank you, Pam.
Welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of January 17, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
Here.
Jesse Major. Major.
President.
Janet McGowan.
Here.
Fred Hartwell is absent and Karen Winter is absent as well. I, Doug Marshall, am present, and Johanna Newman.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, so the time is 6:36 and we are now at the first item on our agenda for this evening. And that is minutes to be approved. We have the minutes from November 15 of last year. Does anyone on the board have any comments on those minutes? Janet, if I, it looked like maybe you made, said something, but you were muted.
No, I didn't say anything. I have no comments. They looked good to me.
Okay, all right, Bruce.
I move to adopt the minutes as presented.
Okay. Johanna.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Johanna. Any, any last chance to make some comments? Anybody want to do that? All right, then we'll go through a roll call for the, for these minutes of November 15. Bruce?
I.
And Jesse.
I.
Janet?
I.
Johanna?
Bye.
And I'm an I as well. That's five in favor with two absences. All right, so that, those are the only minutes for approval for this meeting. We'll go on to public comment period. So I'm seeing, typically I read the names of the people I can see who are attending from the public. And I will read those names now. I see nine people. Alan Snow, Bill Brown, David Loring, Janet Bernardo, Rick Rice, Robert Parent, Tim Cooper, Tom Reedy, and William Brown. Okay, so, members of the public, would anyone like to make a comment on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda at this time? Okay, I guess we will move on. I don't see any hands raised from the public. All right, at this time, we will go to item number three on the agenda, and the time is now 6:39. This is a joint public hearing with the tree warden. So Pam, if you would please bring the tree warden over into the participants. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Chapter 5C, Scenic Roads, and Chapter 87, Paragraph 3, Shade Trees, this joint public hearing of the Planning Board and Tree Warden has been duly advertised in the Daily Hampshire Gazette and posted on the town's electronic calendar. And this concerns site plan review 2024-04 and special permit 2024-03 with the Town of Amherst at 70 Southeast Street. This concerns scenic road removal to allow relocation of a site access drive to mitigate congestion due to proximity to the Main Street East Street intersection. At South 70 Southeast Street, map 15A, parcel 47. Public shade trees impacted by this project include the following trees. One multi-stem maple with stems of 18, 18, 12, and 10 inches. All that, all those numbers consisting of the diameter of the stem at approximate breast height. And one 24-inch ash, which may be required to be removed for safety. Do we have any board member disclosure associated with this hearing? I do not see any. In that case, Chris, are we going to go on to the applicant presentation? And would that be Alan or someone else? You are muted, Chris.
It could be either Alan or Tim Cooper, but I think it should probably be Alan.
Okay. Mr. Snow, welcome to our planning board meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So if, it might be Tim Cooper. Tim Cooper is part of the, the project. So Tim may want to give the actual presentation why they need to, you know, why they're proposing to remove those trees for the driveway.
Okay.
I can give you the quick one, but he'd give you more details.
All right, Tim, I see you and the participants, and so welcome also, and tell us what you're trying to do.
Thank you. I can, can I share my screen just to bring up the location? And I also have, I just want to mention, in the gallery, we have our design team, Rick Rice is also with Denisco, David Loring, Bill Brown, and Janet Bernardo are all part of the design team. So if you want to bring them in or not, they will be helpful in this or the next hearing for questions.
Do I understand that you're with Denisco Design?
I am the Project Architect Manager with Denisco Design, correct?
Thank you.
Would you like me to bring those folks over now, or do you want to wait until we start?
They will.
Just start bringing them in. Okay, I will do that.
So here is a view of the existing condition and the trees in question. There are the two trees, one directly south of the existing north site egress. Excuse me. Which is the maple tree and then the ash, which is.
Tim, could you give us some context for where this is on the overall site?
Absolutely. So here is an overall site plan of the existing school with the entrance at the south end and the egress to the north. All traffic currently enters south and exits to the north. We are going to zoom in around this exit with the two trees that are just to the south of the exit, south of the Main Street, South Street intersection. So the intersection would be just where my cursor is, and this is the egress from the school. Can zoom out a little bit for context, excuse me. So the maple in question is just south of the existing drive, and then the ash is at the corner of the site. So as part of the overall main project, this drive will be converted to an entrance and egress for staff and parent vehicles. So there will be three lanes. It will be widened and moved to the south, so it will be moved away from the intersection at Main and Southeast Street. That movement will move it into this maple tree. That movement is basically to mitigate the traffic concerns with the queue at that intersection. So we would like to move that entrance down to give a little more space. That is why that tree is slated to be removed with the current design. The proximity to the ash tree and the condition of the ash tree and sightlines, which we have to get out there and look at, may require that that ash tree be removed too. But that is why we have made the application for both of those trees to be potentially removed. The maple tree with the current design definitely has to be removed.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to say in your introduction?
I do not. It's a fairly straightforward part of the project compared to all of the other moving pieces.
Okay, all right. I know we had some, at least a couple of board members who made a site visit today. Do either, or any of the folks who did want to say anything about the trees? All right, Bruce is shaking his head no, and I thought, Janet, you have your hand up?
So I went and looked at the trees. You know, the maple is clearly, if you widen that exit or entrance in any way, definitely the maple tree came out. It wasn't clear to me from the map or from, from like the location of the other tree. I didn't know where that tree was vis a vis the new road. So, you know, I wondered if it could be saved, but I didn't have any like maps to say. Excuse me, I'm sorry. So I wasn't sure it had to be removed because I wasn't really sure where the road was going to be. So I didn't, and I couldn't find a map that really showed that clearly. I just had two small maps in my, you know, maps in my packet.
Okay, all right, now, and it sounds like Mr. Cooper isn't even sure that the ash will be affected or not at the moment, so.
The, if I may respond to this. So the drive moved to the south, the curb line is right at the canopy edge. So depending on the health of the tree, it could very well survive. But, you know, for the sake of safety, we would absolutely want to make sure that everything was healthy, not obstructing any views. And before the decision was made to keep it, the few that is on the screen now shows the drive in the final position, which is widened to three lanes. So two can exit and one would come in, and the northernmost lane in the new position would be right in the stem of the existing maple tree, so that's why that.
Okay.
Would want to go.
And is the ash tree the species of ash that's subject to the emerald ash borer?
That Bill Brown might know better than me, or would certainly know better than me if he has been left in, let in.
I couldn't remember.
Have we brought Bill over or not?
I knew there was one more person, but I couldn't remember which one.
See a Bill Brown among the.
No, he's, he should be moving over.
Great, here he is.
And, and I see that Steve Stanish is also, he is part of the design team too. So if he could be let in, that would be great, thank you.
He's on his way to. And then Janet Bernardo, when I was trying to move her over, she was declining at this moment, so.
Okay.
All right, so, Mr. Brown, are you able to hear me and respond?
I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Very faintly. You might get closer to your microphone.
Okay. That is, is an ash tree, and we think it's, is susceptible to the ash borer. It seems to be in fairly good condition now. We have graded the site so that we could save this tree. We've attempted to save it as part of the plan. But the concern is, you know, in the future, as we're going through construction, we are staying, we are close to where the edge of the canopy is. But our concern is that over time, because of the ash borer and construction that's going on, that it may need to be renewed, but we're not certain at this time.
Okay. Janet, I see your hand.
So I just, I wanted to add that it does seem like a very sensible idea to move that exit or further south because it's a very tight, I mean, you know, my kids went to school there, so there's a million times I was making a turn right or left. And it's because, because it's so close to the intersection and there's not like a really clear left-hand turning lane or signal. It is really kind of a very tight, complicated sort of turn, so making it further south, I think would ease some of that. On the other hand, the trees are lovely, the common is lovely, we all, you know, and they look good. So if they could save the ash, you know, maybe we could do something saying, you know, give them permission to cut it down if needed with a, with a preference to save it.
Yes. Okay, Janet. All right. We have very few members of the public left. In fact, I think I gathered Janet Bernardo is part of the design team. And I believe Tom Reedy is here for the second item on our agenda, or third. And I'm not sure about Robert Parent, but are there any members of the public who want to say anything about the, this proposed impact on the trees? Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands from any of the three of them. Chris, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wondered what the, what the tree warden's position is. I know we received a memo, which I think was included in your packet from a member of, or it was either included in your packet or it was emailed to you from a member of the Public Shade Tree Committee who had comments. Actually, he was reporting on what the Public Shade Tree Committee decided, so perhaps Mr. Snow would like to make a report about that and then tell you what his opinion is.
Sure, Alan?
Okay. So I would just say, I'd like to just follow up on a couple thoughts that came to mind over the tree itself.
This is the maple or the ash?
The ash tree. So unless, unless, you know, all ashes are susceptible to emerald ash borer and unless the town wants to put in funding to inject the tree to preserve it from emerald ash borer, then it will die eventually. The tree is surrounded by probably half a dozen other large ash trees that are well in decline and dying from the lash bore, so it's just a matter of a couple of years or so before that tree is in decline, so. As far as the tree hearing goes, it's a healthy tree now, so we need a tree hearing for it. In two more years, I would probably be cutting it down because it's, it's falling apart over the public way, so. I did meet with the Public Shade Tree Committee, we did discuss it. I, I was told essentially that there are two phases to this project, that there's sort of a temporary driveway fix, which is going to be all traffic coming in and out of the northernmost exit. So buses and, and, and non-school, non-school bus vehicles, parents, et cetera, pulling into the school, and the southern entrance is going to become the construction entrance. So for a period of probably two years, this area is going to be used as a, to get in and out of the school for day-to-day operations. And then after the, as the project gets close to finish, the driveway will then be sort of moved again a little bit to reorientate it with a new sidewalk a little further south, even further so than the expansion for the temporary driveway. So I, you know, the silver maple tree is perfectly healthy. You know, it's growing because it seemed to have any structural problems at this, at this stage in its life. They can get quite large and they have a, you know, a history of becoming very large and self-destructing if they're not cared for or improved because they do grow so fast that they are known to be weak-witted trees, so. But that's a long ways away. It's a perfectly healthy tree, so. The Public Shade Tree Committee, as you have in your packet, noted that they, you know, were okay with the ash tree coming down, but they would like to see efforts made to kind of find another design to save the, the silver maple, if possible. So that's their opinion. I don't see how, you know, we can achieve the goals of expanding the driveway there in either direction without impacting significantly the roots over that tree. You might believe the trunk's standing, but I don't know how you get the, the, the temporary driveway in there. So that would be up to, that would be a design task that's above my, you know, ability, so unless it moves all the way to the south, the wood line to the south, I wouldn't say I could save that tree.
And the silver maple is the multi-stem maple?
Yes.
Okay. Rick Rice, I see your hand.
Yeah. Thank you. Just to be clear, the original impetus for removing the silver maple was the desire to move the north driveway curb cut as far south as a site plan would allow, which which brings it into conflict with the multi-stems silver maple. There is, and that is to get as much distance from the curb cut to the intersection as possible. Without doing that, there is no other design that's possible. The driveway would stay, have to stay where it was to clear the tree and widening the driveway temporarily could easily be accomplished by going to the north instead of the south, but we went to the south because that tree was, would have had to have come down anyway to further the final design configuration of the driveway. So for the, again, for the purposes of the early site package, we can tell those bidders not to do what was shown, not to take that tree down, but instead widen the driveway to the north. But that still leaves us with an issue of the driveway configuration with respect to the intersection to the north.
Right. And I assume there's not enough frontage on this site to move this, the driveway entirely past the maple to the south. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Bruce, I see your hand.
Yes. For the record, I guess I should say that although I'm not a member of the school, Elementary School Building Committee, I have attended all but probably three or four of the meetings that they've had in the past three years. So I'm rather familiar with the project. I haven't been participating beyond that, but, well, actually I have. But I do remember many of the conversations, particularly around site selection, whether we would have the Wildwood Site or the Fort River Site. And one of the principal concerns against having the Fort River Site was the, the problems of traffic management at this, in and out of the site. And I, if Rupert Roy Clark, the building, the superintendent of the schools, sorry, the, the Maintenance Department Superintendent of the schools, or he, he would express a very strong concern about trying to mitigate, which is what the design team are doing here. So it's, it's a serious problem that is trying to be solved here, and it seems that the best solution is to move that driveway. So I'm representing, I think, not just my own view here, but, but some of the other folks in the, on the other committees who have been chiming in on this. And also, my personal opinion is I saw that tree. It's a multi-stem tree. It's, it may be healthy, but it's not particularly attractive. I would think under the circumstances, I would strongly support the removal of that tree and, and planting another one that can grow and eventually look a lot nicer than that multi-stem fellow that's currently there.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Janet?
You know, in terms of trying to move the, the exit entrance north, there's actually a little sidewalk there because a lot of kids come through that intersection. There's a monitor there. And so you'd have to move into that sidewalk. And then right next to the sidewalk is a light pole and another tree, so you're kind of very constrained on going north, and I think going north just makes the traffic problem worse. I've been there a few years ago, just looking at the site, and it was just when the buses were leaving and the, the custodian actually goes out there, stops traffic and lets all the buses leave at once. That doesn't help the parents, but it really was an extremely quick exit of all buses, so that was actually encouraging to see. So I, I do think that the south, you know, taking the two trees out is required. It'd be great, or, you know, saying, you know, I mean, I would take out both trees and say plant something else to the south where the ash tree was that can live, you know, and so, you know, you'll keep the canopy going and have something nice for the future. I'm not sure what species. I'm not really an expert on that, but I know Alan has a big vision for the town.
All right, thanks, Janet. I guess I will show my hand here. I also support removing these trees. I agree with Bruce's expression that the traffic management at this site is a major challenge, and anything we can do to allow that to be managed in as positive a way as possible, I will support. Are there other comments from board members at this point? Chris and Alan, do we need a vote from the board approving the removal of these two trees?
I, I had one more question, actually.
Okay.
I'd like to know, what are the plans? Two concerns, one is what are their plans to replant trees either in or next to the public way so that we maintain tree canopy along that stretch of street? And then could they just briefly talk about the tree planting? How many trees have we planted in the new school area?
Okay. Tim?
I'm going to ask Bill to answer that question.
Okay.
Nobody hear me okay?
You're still a little faint. Go ahead.
A little bit, thanks. I'll get closer then.
A little bit faints. I'll get closer then. Um I haven't done an actual count on uh the amount of trees um that we're planting on site. Um but I I it it's roughly a hundred trees in total. And we didn't consider putting trees along this edge because we didn't know if these, the ash tree in particular uh was going to be uh taken out or not. But if it is, we can uh certainly locate a tree uh along the public way as a replacement for the ash that we're picking out.
All right. Um I guess Alan, did you have any suggestions for species? Or Bill, did you have anything in mind? Alan, well, you can go first.
Yeah. So I would just say that I'd be happy to work with them to, you know, select a location in the public way there where they can plant the, you know, one or two trees depending upon space and the species. Um you know, we can discuss that as I learn more about the details of the construction.
All right. So maybe we can make that a condition of our approval that uh the applicant work with the tree warden to uh identify and some and provide suitable a couple of su- suitable replacement trees.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh any other comments from board members? All right, then I will uh imagine a motion that we I that we uh let's see that we approve removal of the multi-stem maple and the ash tree as requested by the applicant on the condition that the applicant work with our town tree warden to uh provide at least one and probably two suitable replacement trees to be planted in the public way uh as replacements. Chris, that sound reasonable?
And close the public hearing.
And oh yes, and close the public hearing. Thank you. All right. So let's uh as a motion, I'll make the motion. Jesse?
One second.
All right. Thank you. Are there other board comments before we go run through a vote? All right, I'll start with you again, Bruce. An ayes in favor of the motion and a nays opposed.
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Janet?
Hi.
And Johanna?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. That's five in favor, two absences. Thank you, Alan, for joining us.
So I'll just um say that I am in favor of that motion as well. So.
Okay. Uh are there any uh procedural things related to your hearing that we need to do?
Uh, no.
Okay, I since I thought this was a joint hearing between you and us, so.
It's I I'm I'm part of the hearing. I I agree to remove the tree. In my role as tree warden, I agree that the two trees should be removed. Um
Okay, uh you are welcome to stay for the as much of the rest of the meeting as you like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Um so the time now is seven oh six. And we will go on to the next public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law forty A, these public hearings have been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. This is a a joint public hearing for site plan review twenty twenty four dash zero four and special permit twenty twenty four dash zero three for the town of Amherst at seventy southeast street located at map four fifteen A parcel forty seven uh located in the RVC and FPC zoning districts. A joint public hearing to request site plan review approval under section three point three three zero of the zoning bylaw to construct a three-story one hundred five thousand seven hundred fifty gross square foot elementary school building with associated site improvements, including parking and athletic fields. And to request a special permit in accordance with section six, table three, footnote A of the zoning bylaw to modify maximum building height requirements and section five point zero one zero of the zoning bylaw to allow for the filling of land to raise the first floor elevation due to the high water table. Do we have any board member disclosures? All right. Sounds like Janet has already disclosed that she had a child who went to the existing building.
Not sure that it really affects my decision that much. It gives me a a granular level of detail on certain aspects, but.
All right.
Yeah, I think many of us have connections to this project, but I'm not sure any of them rise to the level of conflicts that we need to disclose.
Okay. All right. So Tim, uh why don't you come on back and um make your presentation?
Uh thank you. Uh just so it's clear, I was gonna introduce our team. Bill Brown is landscape architect. Uh Janet Bernardo and Steve Stanish are with Horsley Witten. They are civil engineers. Uh David Loring is with Par. Uh he's our traffic engineer and Rick Rice is with Denisco as well. So uh with that, I'm going to give the overall overview of the project and our team is here to answer any questions that I'm sure will come up. One second, I'm just gonna share the presentation. There we go.
There we go.
So starting with um the existing Fort River School, uh it's one story eighty two thousand square foot footprint on a thirty-one acre site. Um the existing school is sort of sprawling, uh which means it's not really suited for uh modern twenty-first century education. And a lot of the spaces are pretty far from exterior wall. So the lighting and the conditions within the school in general are are not what Amherst would hope for an elementary school. Um on the existing site, as we talked briefly in the tree hearing, all traffic enters through the south and egresses at the north. Um there is parking to the west and south of the building. Bus drop off is in the lane closest to the building on the west and parents drop off by circulating through the parking lot to the south and west of the building. There are playing fields and play structures all around the building. Um to the east and south, there is a softball field on site with lights and a skid infield. Um and there are basketball hoops on the pavement to the north of the building. The athletic fields that surround the building are um not particularly well-drained. And so they are subject to flooding for a lot of the year. Then I should mention to the east of the site is the Fort River, but it's a good ways into the tree line, which is separated from the school from um the trees. And there's a fence. And then south of the site, there is a fairing brook. So there are setbacks. Um and there are some natural resources, some wetlands, some habitat areas, all of which are outside of the limit of work for the project, but we will certainly be accommodating. There is uh some compensatory storage, uh some that we'll be doing some minor regrading uh as the flood plain extends onto the site and we will be manipulating the ground within that, but the building itself is outside of it. Moving to the proposed site plan. We have separated uh the vehicle traffic onsite in the proposed plan. Parking for staff and parents will all enter and exit through the north entrance, which will be wide to three lanes. Uh for parent drop off, uh parents will come in, circulate through the lot and drop off at the west end of the building. Traffic for that drop off pattern will be going through the parking lot, but teachers will be in before drop off and they will be leaving before. So there will not be active parking during that, all of which is to say there will still be um staff control of the drop off situation uh as there is now. The south, the southern entrance to the site will be dedicated to buses and service and vans. They will all loop through down here and be able to discharge students to either the door at the center of the building or the main entrance, depending on how staff wants to bring students into the building. Surrounding the building, there are areas for structured play directly north of the building and the cafeteria. There are basketball courts to the east of the building. All of this is on asphalt. The playground itself is on a resilient, important place surface. And then in addition to the outdoor play areas, there are programmed outdoor educational spaces. There is a forest floor garden. There is planter garden, a pollineer garden and a pavilion. A pet is uh sized for one classroom to be outside. All of these amenities are focused on the southern half of the site so that the existing school represented by this dash line can operate with enough parking for the staff and enough play area for the children attending to operate close to normally while all of this is being constructed south of the construction fence. The school will be net zero. Um so there is support for that goal with uh PV on the roof and in the parking lot. Uh the PV in the parking lot is supported by canopies. Uh one of the things mentioned in the development report is that the canopy structures are within the thirty-foot setback of the side property line here. Uh that setback is doubled because of the use. Um we do believe we can get to the typical fifteen-foot setback. Uh but thirty feet might be difficult. We could move this last bay south, but it's something we will have to talk about with the board. Um in the introduction, we mentioned the other waivers that the project will be, special permits that the project will be seeking um to mitigate the high groundwater onsite. The existing f- first floor of the school will be two feet above the old Fort River School. So there was some fill to bring that building up. We will also be including underslab drainage to additionally mitigate the high water table. And then the red line that has appeared is the extent of the flood-prone conservancy. So the building does extend into that. So we'll be seeking a special permit to have the east end of the building in that zone. So we, you know, some of the existing constraints, we are working around onsite, but bringing all of the building site amenities, things that are working for the program that we are looking to have operating on day one. That is why it's all clustered down to the site. So as soon as the school is built, there can be a seamless transition from the existing Fort River School to the new building. There are just some views of what the building will look like. The view on top is approaching from the bus loop on the south entrance. Uh we're about halfway into the driveway, looking at the building from the west. Uh the building steps up from a first floor or a single floor massing with the administration and the music room and the cafeteria. It steps up to a three-story classroom and beyond. The view on the s- bottom half of the page is looking from the north um at the, as you would be leaving in the parent drop off drive, looking at the building. And you can see the three-story classroom behind the library and cafeteria. Just some closer views there. As you're getting closer to the building here, you'd be at the beginning of the van drop off which is off of the bus drop off loop to the south. This is the main entrance, which is in this particular view obscured by some plantings. Um the gym, and then there's a second entrance to the building to the south, another building of the view of the building from the north. That is, uh those are the plans and the uh views of the building. Um I don't know how much else you would like to get into, but we have utility plans. We have lighting plans. Um um we can also open up to questions. Um I don't know how you would like to proceed. That is the overall of the of the project and and the benefits that we see from.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. I'm sure we'll come up with a few questions for you to show us a little more of the design before we're done. All right, so um I guess you you mentioned uh the solar panels going fifteen feet, going into the thirty-foot required setback. Um and I didn't remember hearing that before. Uh Chris, do we have a complete list of the waivers?
Um that particular item is not a waiver. It's a special permit and um it is mentioned a couple of times, I think. One is on page two of the development application report um where the side setback is mentioned. And the side setback normally in this district is fifteen feet, but because this is an educational use, the um setback needs to be thirty feet. And the um setback for the solar canopy that's proposed appears to me to be five feet in one location and ten feet, well, five feet for the canopy and ten feet for the post. Now, it is possible to um to have a special permit to modify that setback requirement. And um at the bottom of page two is a description of the footnote A special permit that the applicant may choose to take advantage of. Um so the applicant has a couple of different um choices here. The applicant can pull back from the property line thirty feet and then meet the um zoning dimensional requirements, or the applicant could uh apply for a special permit to modify that setback requirement and then choose what, you know, how much he wants to modify it. Um and I, it's kind of a trade-off between having more solar canopy available um or less solar canopy available. And so you may choose to grant the special permit um for this modification in order to allow the school to have more um solar panels.
Okay. Yeah, I guess uh I had missed that on the development application report. Thanks for pointing that out.
This, um they have not yet applied for this particular special permit. So it it is a special permit that they need to apply for um going forward.
Okay.
And it's a planning board special permit. So did you want me to list all the special permits that they need?
Well, I think it's gonna be useful to have them all in one place. Yeah.
All in one place.
I, you know, I mean.
Sure, I can.
I guess I guess that just seems to me like a good place to start is uh uh you know, at least to to be clear about what what explicit permission we need to give.
Well, I can um talk about it now and then I can provide you with the document after this public hearing session uh is continued, um if you choose to continue it. So um the first special permit that they need is to modify the height of the building. Um the height of the building is um allowed to be thirty-five feet in the RVC zoning district. So everything to the left of that red line is in the RVC zoning district. Um so uh what they're proposing is a forty-three foot high building and thirty-five feet is allowed in the RVC zoning district. So that's one special permit that they are asking for from the planning board. The other special permit that they're asking for so far from the planning board is to allow the filling of land under section five point one oh of the zoning bylaw. And that limits um Under section five point one oh of the zoning bylaw and that limits um the filling of land either. Two feet over five thousand square feet or five feet over two thousand square feet and they're going beyond that because of the filling. That they need for the athletic area as well as for the um building. So they will need a special permit from the planning board to do that. So. So what I'm saying is really along with the site plan review, they need a special permit for the height of the building. And they need a special permit for a filling of land and that's embedded in this um report, but perhaps it's not clearly um.
Well, those those two items were in the introduction.
Yep.
You know, and in the advertisement for this hearing.
That's correct.
Yeah, it was just the third one that made me surprised that that hadn't been mentioned yet.
The canopy, yeah, I think that was uh in the revised um. Development application report, which I just sent out yesterday.
Yeah.
Had sent one out previous to that and then I sent a revised one out yesterday.
Right.
So there's another special permit that um the applicant needs. For a a special permit to locate two structures in the FPC zoning district and one of the structures is. What Tim pointed out, the east end of the building of the main building is um lies within the. FPC zoning district and the FPC zoning district is not the same as the Hundred Year Flood Plane. So there's no compensatory storage required, but there is a requirement of the zoning bylaw to have a special permit to locate. Um a structure in the FPC zoning district. So that's, there's that portion of the main building. And then there's a little outdoor learning structure and um that is shown right there, yes, and that's a little. I think it's an open sided structure with a roof and and pillars. Um so that's another. It's an accessory structure that will be located in the FPC zoning district, so they need a special permit for that. And then. What we real. I realized um kind of late in the day was that um. They also need footnote A special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So that that special permit to locate. A structure in the FPC zoning district is a zoning board of appeals special permit. So the planning board. Needs to know about it and acknowledge it, but doesn't need to act on it. Um and. As part of that um special permit from the zoning board of appeals, um the applicant will need to. Get permission under footnote A um to locate a structure that's taller than one floor. Because the limitation on a structure is only one floor in the FPC zoning district. And it is also over twenty feet in height, so they'll need a special permit from the. Uh ZBA for the structure that's over twenty feet in height. And I spoke with the building commissioner and he felt that the um the. Legal ad that has been published for the special permit from the zoning board of appeals um can cover. Those three items locating structures within the FPC zoning district. Um having a building that's more than one floor and that would be a footnote A special permit. And then having a building that's taller than twenty feet and that would also be um a footnote A special permit. He thought those could all be encompassed in the zoning board of appeals review, which was originally scheduled for January twenty fifth. I had made a mistake in. The development application report and I think I said it was going to be February eighth, but it's actually January twenty fifth that the advertisement was for. Um the zoning board of appeals may not uh be able to have a quorum on that day. Or that night, so um our staff person, Rob Wachilla, who staffs the zoning board is um trying to. See if he can have a quorum for that day, but if not, it would probably be sometime in early February that this would be heard by the. Zoning Board of Appeals. So I think that is the extent of the special permits um. Which would be, I guess, in the end, it would be three from the planning board. It would be. Um a special permit for the height, a special permit for a filling. And a special permit for side setback for the um. For this uh solar canopy. The one that you have not received yet is the side setback for the solar canopy. So. Um Mr. Cooper will be um submitting that unless the applicant decides to. Pull back and not um not put the solar canopy so close to the property line. So I think that's, I think that's it.
Thank you for running through all that, Chris. That is helpful to hear it. Uh Janet, I have seen your hand for a while and I'm now ready to call on you.
Thank you. Um Chris, I got a little confused on buildings and structures. Can you. Uh say which is the ZBA structure, like what are the special, what structures for the the ZBA has to approve? I I kind of was writing my notes.
It was the the school building and the the shade structure for the outdoor classroom.
Oh, so it's the building itself. Okay, thank you.
It's part of the building. It's only about maybe a quarter to a third of the eastern end of the building. It's going to be located in the FPC zoning district. So that's the part that needs. The special permit and then that little outdoor classroom needs a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um alright, so actually I'm gonna ask Bruce a question since you've attended most of this. The school uh building committee meetings over the last many years. Um was, do you think in the site selection, it was understood that all these special, that these permits would be required?
Um bearing in mind that I was not a member of the committee, I just witnessed and so forth and I probably didn't get all of the packages and so forth. Um but I would guess that at this level of granularity, the answer would be no. Um uh in terms of very specifics, because of course we hadn't designed the building then. So for example, the the uh the array. One would not have any idea that we would need that. As far as FPC instances, I'm not sure. It's possible, but I don't. I don't recall that being discussed, but actually Tim was, Tim was uh, it would have been involved in uh. More extensive discussions than things that didn't happen in the meeting, for example, which probably represents the greater part of his time on the project. Probably definitely, so.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Bruce. Uh Tim.
Sure. Um so we have. Known uh from the very beginning um about uh the flood prone conservancy and the issues. Of the flood plane and the setbacks from the Four River and the Faring Brook on the site. That being said, we did not know that all of the permits listed. Uh certainly not the. And I I guess if we had read everything. We did, we we did not know about all these permits, not for the PV. So the PV location was not determined when we chose the site. Uh that it's ended up where it has so that it can be operational on day one. I mean, you'll see a a large open parking lot just north of where the PV is located, which is honestly a perfect location. Except it's not available until the existing building is taken down. And so to comply with the net zero bylaw, you have to have your. Energy production systems, your high efficiency seating system, operating when the building is operating. Uh so that is why it is pushed to where it is. Um you could push it further onto the grass, but it's uh. In our view, not a good design decision to put uh opaque PV canopies over where we want something to grow. Uh so um you know, once we've considered the many facets of the project, that. PV canopy got pushed into that location, that is why it is there. So I I will say that one was not known when the site was selected. We did know that we would be coming before you and the ZBA when the site was selected, uh but we didn't know. At this level of granularity, to use your words, uh which I think are good, what we would be applying for.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking more of the fill and the height. Um but that's fine. Thanks, thanks for. Okay, Bruce, uh is your hand still up?
Yes, it is. Um definitely the fill. That was a very big uh uh recognition in site selection that there would be a cost associated. Uh with this site over Wildwood, but that the reason I had my hand up was uh. Um if I could uh imagine the intent of the uh bylaw that doubles the distance for a school for setbacks and so forth. It would not be that uh it would be trying to push solar arrays back, I would think. This is probably way before anybody. Thought that there would be solar arrays associated with schools independent of the building. Um so I would guess that uh we would be. I would be comfortable in uh supporting this uh this uh um. Uh this this particular aspect of a permit, a special permit application. Because it's not really the educational facility, uh the 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 educational spaces and all of the activity associated with that, with humans involved. That is impinging in the setback. That is way, way back and it's really only a mechanical device. That's on the setback and my guess is that uh that we could reasonably uh agree to do this without creating the kind of. Uh precedent that might embarrass others.
Alright, well, I I mean, you know, this is a solar array immediately adjacent to a residential property. And I can imagine us having other solar arrays adjacent to residential properties with neighbors who are. Looking for much greater setbacks from their land. Um so, you know.
So maybe I'm arguing that it should only be fifteen if we have a rather than thirty, but uh.
Right.
Under the circumstances, I'll, I understand what Tim's saying and I basically support it.
Right.
And have done for quite a while.
Okay, Janet.
So um do, are we gonna discuss this particular special permit right now or do you wanna like. Pull back the lens and get the whole overview? Cause I do have a bunch of ideas for this. Um this particular issue, but I'm not sure should we talk about it now, so.
Yeah, I I I really kind of just wanted to get a a overall picture of the permits that we were going to discuss.
No, I thought that was a great thing, cause I didn't, I hadn't tracked it at all. I mean, I didn't.
Yeah, and and now that, now that we have that, um if there, if you wanna. Sort of pull back, uh I'm happy to do that. I think that would be a good thing.
Okay.
And so let's kind of head in that direction and Chris, you wanted to say something.
I wanted to say that you haven't yet received the application for the special permit for the solar array, so I think it makes sense to put off that discussion. Thanks.
Right, okay. Alright, and um so, so we have two sort of main overall overarching. Uh charges before us. One is the site plan review. And the other is this, these particular, the two special permits that have been applied for. And so maybe I it seems to me, maybe we should start with the site plan review. Does that, anybody object to that? So I guess, as I read through the uh material that we were sent. Uh you know, I felt like the traffic and the water management were probably the biggest issues for me. Um and so I'm gonna wanna ask a few questions about that. And so um Johanna, I guess I'm I'm kind of opening up the floor for general questions about the site.
Thanks. I was mostly hoping we could get a re- a report back from the site plan or from the site visit that happened today.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me.
Of course.
Yeah, I think, was it, was it Bruce and uh Janet who made it out there and managed to get back? Um so do either of you wanna give us a recap of of what you heard and saw?
I thought Janet would be the one because she's got the fresh eyes.
I have fresh eyes and then Bruce has detailed eyes and Chris was there also, so I think we could do it as a group effort. Um so we basically went to the site um and we, you know, um Mr. Cooper showed us where the door was, the front door. And it's kind of in the parking lot, the side parking lot. Um I wanted sort of a big view of the site because I mean, I've been there a million times. There's, there's a rip, Fort River is behind it to the right or the south of it is Fearing Brook. Um. And then there's a chain link fence keeping all the students in. Um on the north side of the site, there's a small wetland and I think there's another floating wetland somewhere else. There um, it's a wetland that my children have disappeared into. And never been seen again, so apparently it's cut for that then. Um we basically um. In the part, the parking lot on the side, which is now used for, you know, um parents to drop off their kids. There's a whole collection of pine trees, white pine trees that will come down, cause the building will be there. They seem happy, but they're just completely in the way. Um the pavement of the parking lot and the roadways will be, you know, standard asphalt pa- pavement. I had asked about whether there was like a curbing in the main parking lot. To the west of the building, if there's gonna be a kind of a break between all these lines of cars, cause I thought that I had. Wonder, wondered about the safety of that with terms of kids running with so many lanes of traffic. Um. I, we, questions were asked about why there's not, um the entire parking lot is not covered with solar panels and. You know, which, because this, this, the forever site is actually identified as a place that we could have large scale solar. And the answer um was that they could extend the panels, but the purpose of this project was to build. A net zero elementary school and stay within their budgets. And so while the, the, the um canopies could be extended. They really just stopped where they had to stop. Um um but there, you know, there's a possibility it could be extended. They also. Wanted to make sure that, you know, then they turn the lights on the first day, that um everything was, it was a net zero building from day one. Um and not day, you know, three months later or whatever. Um what else did we talk about? Um we talked about. You know, the different landscaping, um like the, around the school, there's different play areas and there's the the student um outdoor classroom. Um closer to the trees, there's kind of a natural forest floor. Um you know, place with a lot of trees that the kids can do sort of creative play. And then also, there's a whole no mo grass area to the south, which I became obsessed with ticks, become obsessed with ticks. But apparently that's gonna be like a pollinator area, meadow, um part of the educational component. And tying in with the organic garden and some other pollinator, pollinator friendly um plantings. Um I don't know how that will be handled in the future if the children do wind up with ticks. Um I had questions about the stormwater management because it's, you know, it's a, it's a river, it's next to a river. And so um Mr. Cooper showed us, um and I think it might be good to pull up a map. There's like different places that. Water is held and kind of cleaned through a sand, sand kind of um surface. Th- this is out of my wheelhouse in terms of expertise and so Mr., you know, Bruce, please help me, but um. There's like a culvert that goes north, south on the site, kind of um, kind of where, through the parking lot, as I recall. But right in front of um the parking lot with all these. Different shrubs is kind of a sand filtration system, obviously underground. Uh it will hold water until it's ready to go somewhere else. Um there's another um kind of rain garden. In front of, I'm trying to think about the north side of the building. Um and then there's all this underground infrastructure that he didn't go into huge detail with, but I think they'll present later to us. So water will be filtered through grass, through rain, I mean, sand, rain gardens. Held until it's ready to go and then it goes south, um I guess to these. I don't wanna say culvert, but then eventually would be released into the fearing brook, clean and and pleasant. Um and then the, you know, we talked about the need to raise the site up to, you know, avoid dampness. Uh what else? I'm trying to check my notes. Um the athletic fields will be improved. And that, they're, they're gonna, there's like two phases to the project. The first one is to build. Um the school and all the infrastructure around it. Um move all the kids into the school. Phase two would be demolish the building. And improve the, all the athletic fields you see to the north. Um. I had wondered if it was enough space for so many kids to play, but they're gonna do recess in several shifts. And there'll be different playground equipment. I had asked if they're gonna save the playground equipment, cause there's really four sets of equipment. Two sets which are actually fairly new and I think um. You know, Mr. Cooper said he, he thought it could be saved, but it would be expensive to save it and it might, you know, some. The town official he had spoken to sort of recommended new equipment. Um we had talked about the lighting. And where the highest lighting would be, which is around the building. We talked about the timing of the lights. We talked about whether the current light poles that are around the softball field could be reused or like. Um just cut down and, you know, we, they're really sort of huge. Bruce had a lot to say about that. And I think that's. Most of. Um I had a question about where the priority habitat was. It's not in the grassy area, it's in the um. Tree area, so it's not a natural, that whole area is not really in our purview or the priority habitat won't be affected. Um. Um, and then we talked about the entrances and exits, um, and that, you know, basically keeping the school buses and the kids discharging and getting off separate from parents and staff, or parents picking up people, kids, um, is done kind of as a safety. You know, I think it's logistically easier, but I think also it's safer to keep kids out of that parking lot as much as possible. Bruce, do you have anything to add?
I, uh, was tracking you on Chris's, uh, um, notes that she issued a moment ago, and you hit every base that she hit, plus a couple of your own. So no, I don't.
We also talked about, um, there's a crossing guard now at the north exit, and whether, uh, one might be needed at the south, if kids are coming across the street from the west. Particularly if, when the East Street School is developed into like a fairly large housing situation, which I think is in the hopper. There is some low income housing behind there, and I do know kids come across, and I, you know, ostensibly, they should walk up to the intersection, wait for the lights, and then cross. And that intersection is like the slowest intersection waiting light situation. And so I, I wondered if kids would just wanna cut across from the common and just get to school. And so, I don't know if that could be a permit condition later, if it turns out to be a problem, but I do think that's a kind of a possible stick, you know, a danger or a safety issue.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Those, that was extensive. And, um.
It's a group effort.
Thank you and Bruce and Chris for going. Chris, anything you wanted to add? Okay.
That covers it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Doug, if I may.
Yes.
Um, uh, one of the things we didn't do, which I had on my list, but forgot to, is I, I wanted to look at the mural. Uh, and I wanted to look at that because the design review board's single condition really, or one of two, was that we should seek to retain that mural. And I confess, I can't remember seeing it. So perhaps I could ask, uh, I don't know, Tim, whether you're familiar with that mural? Uh, or, um, anybody who might be. Is that a mural that's already outside, or is it an inside mural? Uh, what are we dealing with here?
Uh, it is an exterior mural, um, which is essentially painted plywood fastened to the exterior of the building. Um, so if it were to be saved, it would probably be in an interior condition, cause it's not, um, built, constructed, fabricated in a way that would last the lifetime of a generational building. But, um, uh, on other projects, we have also scanned, photographed, if you will, and reprinted artwork on other media. Uh, so that is something we could look at.
And have, have you got any plans to incorporate it at this point?
We have identified areas in the building, and we have continuing meetings with the subcommittee that's designing the building to finalize the locations for them. But, uh, an exact location and an exact extent of the existing mural, no, we do not have that at this point.
But you have a, a definite plan to either reinstall it or replicate it somewhere in the building?
We, no, uh, to be clear, we have identified areas in the building that could be used to host art. What that art will be, whether it's that mural or some other art that is commissioned or drawn from somewhere in the district, has not been decided.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, all right. Are there general questions from the board that we should entertain at the moment? I, I'm, I'm also thinking that it might be useful to have your civil engineer go through the water management plans, and have your, have your traffic engineer talk about the traffic mitigation to the extent that we haven't heard of everything about it so far. Um, so you, those guys can kind of get ready. Um, Johanna, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um, as part of the traffic mitigation plan, I would love to hear more about what the vision is for cyclists to enter the site, park bikes on the site and exit the site.
Okay.
Um, should, starting with civil, can, uh, Steve or Janet, if you're here, um, do you want me to share a plan, or do you have a plan that you can share to give an overview of the stormwater management system?
Uh, yeah, I can give an overview. If you have a plan to share, that would be helpful.
Sure.
So our general stormwater management plan consists of, uh, a bunch of different tools from our toolbox to try to, uh, manage the stormwater on the site. Um, some of these pieces include water quality units, deep some catch basins, sand filters, rain gardens, uh, fire retention car- gardens, as well as, um, a grass swale. Um, we're using each of these on different parts of the site, varying, uh, because the site is varying in different types of soil, as well as different depths of groundwater. Um, I can, I guess I can go along the site from uh, top to bottom and left to right. So where this cursor is now, just below that, if you're looking at the northern parking lot, there is one of two sand filters. Um, what this is, is a shallow, uh, shallow intake area that has a few different, um, water quality units, um, that are taking in, taking in water that are draining to this area for the parking lot. Um, this is, uh, lined and has underdrain to it. This upper sand filter connects to second sand filter where the cursor is now. Um, that's also taking the southern portion of that parking lot. These two sand filters are connected and have multiple outlets that eventually drain to the double culvert that runs through the western end of, western end of the site. Um, and out to Fearing Brook. Um, it connects to the northern portion of the site where there is a wetland located. Uh, as it's conveyed through the site. And as you know, that brook ends up going to the Fort River. The points, these, um, water quality units, as well as, um, the sand filters are to help with uh, treatment of, uh, stormwater that's running off a parking lot, and that's, um, generally onsite, as well as help detain some of the water onsite. So we are meeting our peak runoff rate. Uh, that is matching the existing condition. Um, that is the major staff and, um, uh, parent parking lot area. As you go to the southern portion of the site, the bus, uh, bus and service drop off area, there's a fire retention located there that is handling the majority of the stormwater that is coming from the paved area around in that section. Um, it is being treated in a slight depressional area there, and that also has an underdrain to it, and drains and connects to that culvert, that double culvert as well, um, that runs underneath um, the smaller of the two islands, um, in that bus service drop off area, and then out to Fearing Brook. Another, uh, stormwater control measure that we have is a rain garden that is near these basketball courts. It's taking, uh, surface level runoff from the, um, multiple play areas. And, uh, treat, uh, withholding some of the water and treating it within this area. This water eventually overflows to the other side of these um, walking paths area, walking path areas, as where you're seeing the cursor now, um, and drains to, uh, the Fort River. There are some smaller, um, stormwater control measures that include stone trenches that help reduce some of the debris or anything that's coming off of, um, each of these playground areas that are surrounding these uh, basketball courts that are helping with some of the sediment removal prior to getting to these, um, these larger, uh, this larger rain garden area. In addition to these stormwater control measures that are typical for clean water, there's also uh, one or two locations where we're also, we have subsurface infrastructure that is helping detain water, which includes the athletic field, as well as this playground area. Each of these are designed with a subsurface stone reservoir to help with draining of these, uh, facilities, but it also helps with delaying the timing of that runoff from these facilities. Uh, both of these, both this playground area and this athletic field, uh, drain via underdrain pipe, uh, underneath this, uh, walk that you're seeing that's running north, south to the east of the athletic field, and end up draining to the Fort River as well.
Okay, are you, that's, that's, that's it?
There, I mean, I'm, I, I'd like to pause. If you have any questions of what I've explained so far, I can.
Okay.
Go into detail.
Does anybody have any questions at the moment? Janet?
But, this is a little throwback to the site plan report. Um, the question had sort of come up for me, um, reading the conservation before they did the NOI of who's gonna maintain this system. And so it turns out, um, talking through with DPW and the school maintenance staff, the school will be on a, like a calendar for inspecting, um, to see if, you know, drains need to be cleaned out, and then if they do, then DPW will do that work. And I think that is in the, um, con- concombs permit. And it might be an idea for us to put it in our permit. So it's just the idea of a maintenance schedule and who does what is in people's minds. Um, so that's one thing. Um, I forgot my second point. I'll, I'll have to remember.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
To touch upon that, that is correct. There, uh, has been an agreement between the, uh, Department of Public Works, as well as the school for, uh, the different pieces of the operation and maintenance of these different control measures throughout the site. Um, uh, there, there is an understanding of who does what and when. Uh, we have provided an operation and maintenance manual, uh, detailing what is needed for each of these different control measures. Um, it, so the, to my understanding, the the level of maintenance for the school is, uh, typical, uh, mowing and weeding is needed, as well as picking up general debris in each of these, whereas the Department of Public Works is typically looking at uh, cleaning out catch basins, uh, as needed, um, or at doing anything that requires, um, mechanical sweeping or, uh, general vac- uh, vacuuming, um, for different, uh, control measures.
Okay. Uh, Bruce?
Um, given the history of, uh, um, moisture water problems associated with the school building itself and the interior spaces of the, uh, present Fort River building, I think it's important that, uh, we ask, uh, um, with regard to the building itself, the footprint, uh, um, I noticed in the drawings, there are what I might call conventional footing drains, and probably some, uh, underslab gravel. Uh, the building has been lifted two feet. Uh, you've told us, uh, the, is there any, beyond that, is there any special, um, drainage, uh, provisions to ensure that this building doesn't have a a ghost of a chance in hell of, uh, being, uh, beset by anything similar to the problems that the old school has had to deal with for the whole of its life?
So we have that typical foundation drain that's in here, that should be tying into our, uh, roof drain runoff that's leading away from the school. Um, beyond that, I would defer to, uh, Tim or Rick that may be able to answer that question.
Okay. All right. I see Rick's hand.
I just wanna clarify that we have underslab, um, drainage, uh, so it's, it's not a typical footing drain, if, if that does exist on a drawing in some old set that, that is, uh,
Right.
misleading. Uh, but, but that will connect to the, uh, roof drainage system, and that will eventually, but uh, just to respond to Bruce's point, yes, we are lifting it up. We are breaking capillary action with a porous fill. We are doing drainage layer. Um, um, all of which is a belt suspender system for, um, making it nearly impossible for water to travel upward.
Okay. Bruce, um, so any other questions?
Sorry, no, it's a legacy. I've got many other questions, but they'll be coming in time.
Okay. And Rick, I still see your hand. You wanna add to that?
I was gonna add that, uh, the new building in its new location finished floor elevation is higher than the existing building's finished floor elevation. So we're pulling it up out of the natural, uh, groundwater elevation. And we're also raising the elevation of the athletic fields to similarly pull that up uh, out of the, get it higher, and then have gravity drains, uh, as Steve mentioned, draining that off uh, toward the riverfront.
Okay. Thank you. Johanna?
Thank you. Um, and now might not be the time, in which case put me in my place, but, um, the direct drainage of the fields into the river just made me wonder what the management plan was for the fields and whether that management plan included application of fertilizer and pesticides, and if so, what was being done to reduce impacts on the river?
Okay. Um, Tim, anybody wanna, oh, Janet, I see your hand.
Jen.
Yeah, um, just for the record, Janet Bernardo with the Horseley Witten Group. Um, the operation maintenance plan that we have put together, and we have discussed with the school department, as well as the DPW, includes, um, the types of fertilizers and pesticides that could be placed on that field, and the idea of minimizing it to the greatest extent possible. The, basically, the underdrain system, water will fall on the grass, work its way through the material, and then get into an underdrain. So it takes some time to get to those pipes. And then it's a whole, like, um, fanned hexagon kind of, uh, system that eventually brings it all the way to one, well, there's three actual outlets along that path. And the wooded area is still like greater than two hundred feet from the river. It's a like the wooded area that's there is, um, that's the habitat that you, I think, were mentioning. Um, there's a good long distance. So we have had the discussion, and it is in the O and M plan, um, for this athletic field.
And I, I, I recall noticing in the, uh, communication from the Conservation Commission that there was also some conditions around fertilizer in their order as well, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Johanna, any other questions before we go to Janet? Okay, Janet?
So, you know, I, I hear all these details of the stormwater management. I understand it conceptually. I have no way of really analyzing it. And so I'm hoping that the town engineer is gonna take a look at it and give us the AOK or make recommendations before we um, sign a permit. So is, Chris, do you think that we'll get something from Jason Skills hopefully soon? Or?
Chris?
Yes, we, uh, we sent the transmitter to Jason, and we reminded him a couple of times. Um, so I'm hoping that we will get a response from him. Um, but, um, the, um, Erin Jacques, the Wetlands Administrator, has reviewed all of this for the Conservation Commission. And she's very knowledgeable about, um, drainage systems. So I would say that her review is, um, probably equal to what Jason would do. Um, but we will still keep asking Jason for his review.
Okay. Janet, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so I guess I had a question. You know, I, I see, or I, you, you've described these sand filters, uh, swales, rain gardens, all, all of which I assume rely on gravity to move water down. And I guess my question is, are any of these, uh, items below the level of the, of the water table? And, you know, I, I guess there've been repeated references in some of this material and previously to the high water table of this area. I understand you're raising the building, and I now understand you're raising some of the athletic fields. But, uh, But uh, is, are the, so, I guess are the invert elevations of the, of these uh. Control mechanisms high enough to be out of the water table?
So where, where we are planning, uh, Janet, do you want to answer this one?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so where we are planning uh some of these control measures that um. Uh, we're, we're determining whether or not they're above that water table. Um, some of these control measures will be lined with a liner. Um, to prevent any intrusion of that groundwater table. But for the most part, when uh, when we have done our uh. Uh, test pits in each of these areas. Um, we're taking into consideration what kind of control measures we're actually going to use, so they're. Uh, a bit shallower than your typical stormwater control measures that you'd see uh on a regular site that don't have groundwater issues. Um. A lot of these were built in, uh, designed in a way that. We're staying really close to the surface and we don't have a lot of depth to play with, so we're staying. Uh, out of that uh ground, uh typical groundwater that you'd see on site, so. Anything to add, Janet?
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna add that there, as you know, we mentioned there is a large twin culvert that crosses through the site. And that became our control, so the invert. Of our final invert needed to hit the, like, the top. The top of our pipes need to hit the top of that culvert was the goal, so that it would be above. Above the bottom of the culvert, it's a forty-four by twenty-seven?
Seven, correct.
Twenty-seven, and so if we have a twelve inch pipe coming in, it's coming in at the top, so it has. Um, that separation from the bottom of the culvert, so that was kind of our goal is to keep that culvert as our controlling invert.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um. Any other questions on water at the moment? All right, um. Tim, uh, is there somebody from your? Team that should go through the traffic conversation?
Uh, we have David Loring here, I will uh just. Preempt his comments to saying that, um, you know, in discussions with the town, our purview sort of ends at the property line, but uh. And off-traffic stuff, uh, we've discussed, but is, is not part of the project, so uh, with that, I'll let. David, talk about what we have done onsite.
Um. Rick, I see your hand, you want to say something before?
I wanted to say about the uh, not just leave Tim's statement that. Uh, our work stopped at the property line, the town has retained. Uh, a different consultant. To look at traffic control measures related. From the project offsite and that report is due to them in February. And I got that information uh from, from Paul Bockelman. Through the OPM.
Great, thank you.
Um, Mr. Um.
Yes, yes.
Marshall, do you want to take a break?
Oh, that's a good point, it is eight o'clock. Um. Sure, why not? Um, I guess I will mention uh. That I was thinking if we, if we, it doesn't seem like we're gonna get anywhere close to finish tonight, that maybe we. Target something like nine thirty for trying to finish, get to a stopping point. And um, so I just want to plant that seed. Um, however, yes, we usually take a five-minute break right around eight o'clock. So my clock is showing eight oh six. Uh, feel free to take a break and turn off your camera, mute your uh microphone. And turn on your camera at least when you come back at eight eleven. So, five minutes from now, thank you.
I don't need one at the moment, thank you.
Doug, I'm back, but I'm gonna keep my camera off for a few minutes, but I'll be listening.
I'm sorry, Jesse, could you say that again?
I'm back, I'm just gonna keep my camera off for a few minutes.
Okay.
But I'm still here.
Rick, can I assume that your hand is a legacy hand?
Yes, it is, I, I'll take it down now, thank you.
Okay. And before we, before we get to David, I wanted to ask one more question that I had, was having trouble remembering before the break about the water. Just wait for everybody to get back.
I love Jesse Nature's screensaver. So beautiful.
I suspect that's some of the biological material he works with.
That's right.
Yeah.
I wonder what.
Johanna, if you're there, please come on back.
I wonder what Jesse's scale is, is it uh microbial or is it galactic?
I suspect, I think it's probably microbial.
It's, it's, it's embryo implanting in the uterus, if you have to know.
Oh. It looks like a carabiner.
I hate to ask, which is what?
The red oval shape is the, it's a mouse uterus, and then the, inside of that is a very early mouse embryo making contact.
Good heavens.
So cold.
That's what I do for work.
Okay, we've got, we've got Johanna back, so we've got our. Our board representation. Uh, before we get to the traffic, I just wanted to ask one question of either Janet or. Steve, I think it was. Um, is it my, am I underst- standing our conservation regulations correctly that? You, since this is an existing site with an existing building, it's considered developed. And therefore you only need to treat. Or maybe control, control or. Hold or filters, whatever verb we need to use, more of the, of the stormwater than is existing. Is currently being controlled, is that true?
The Stormwater Management Handbook, that is um, from the Department of Environmental Protection DDP, they. They uh have specific standards that we need to go by, and we need to match. Uh, while we cannot increase post-development stormwater runoff over pre-development stormwater runoff, so. If it was a wooded site, we might have to do a lot more than we have to do because it was an existing school, but we are um. Reducing our peak flow under our proposed conditions from what is currently flowing towards the Fort River.
So this, so the devices that you're using are containing water. And holding it. So that the peak flow is lower.
Correct.
Okay.
Because of groundwater, usually you would um want to infiltrate as much as possible. But because groundwater is high, we couldn't infiltrate as much as. We typically want to and like to, we are proposing infiltration under like the athletic fields and the playground and. And in the rain garden, so we have some areas that are particularly shallow, uh, stormwater features. The uh sand filters are a little deeper so that they could hold back some of the water.
Okay. And, and one other question prompted by your saying you have very shallow features. Um. Particularly on the, the playfields. Uh, if I want to set a, a baseball base. And it had, you know, how, how close to the surface is, are your? Uh, infiltration pipes, you know, if I need to put a stake in the ground to.
Oh.
Hold a uh volleyball field, a volleyball net or.
They're actually two feet down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Bill Brown actually did that design, they're two feet down.
So we, so there's twenty-four inches of cover over everything at a minimum.
Yes, it's the um, like the rain garden that is behind the basketball courts. That is more, it's kind of a landscaping feature, it will have plants in it that help um. Provide water quality for the runoff that's coming into it, so it will, you may not even understand that it is a. Actually happening for stormwater management because it will look like a garden.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else think of any water questions while you were taking a break? Okay, uh, Mr. Loring, I think you're on, why don't you talk to us about the traffic control within the site?
Okay, well, Par prepared it, David Loring, Par Corporation, you were the traffic consultant for Denisco for this project. The, the main goal of our project, we prepared a traffic impact analysis, which I believe has been submitted to the planning board in uh May of two thousand twenty-two. That reviewed both the Wildwood and the Fort River sites. Doing a complete traffic analysis and study um for those two sites. Now, as we turn attention specifically to Fort River, we were involved with both looking at the on and off-site. At the conceptual level when we did that traffic impact analysis, um, so. We've got the two separations, as you've seen, come up with the bike or the bus and the drop-off loop. Designing that to accommodate the buses and drop-off procedures, looking at queuing based on the information provided from the school department. For the number of buses um and vans that will be used for the drop-off. Then confirming the geometric movements to allow. That geometric shape, making sure that we could put dual bus lanes through there and accommodate with the geometry. Um, that also has the bike and pedestrian walkways associated where they'll come in. Off of Southeast Street and cross and then enter through likely the main entrance of the school. The northern section that Tim alluded to earlier includes three lanes, one lane in, two lanes out. Traffic is intended to come in from the drop-off, parent drop-off loop through the parking lot and then would queue up. Along the east lanes that um head in a north-south orientation. Um, within the parking lot itself, we included raised. Crosswalks or a raised table, if you will, to ensure that speed would be controlled. Through that parking lot for the protection and safety of both all users, kids and uh. You know, people traversing back and forth through the parking lot. Um, there's, we added signage that are shown in the signage plan. Um, a lot of the impacts are, are off-site, and we did provide conceptual level of improvements or opinions on what could be done to at least. Alleviate some of the traffic concerns for this site. I don't know how much more I can say or you want to hear, but um, cause Tim touched on the overall patterns earlier, um. But I can be glad to elaborate further on any specifics with regards to the traffic and the layout that's there.
All right, thank you. I guess I'll, I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna just start off with a question. Um. You talk about the, the, I'm gonna call it the student drop-off, because we're dropping off students. Um, along the east side of the parking lot. And if I'm dropping off a student, I'm gonna want to do it at the south end, right? Cause that's where the front door is when it's raining cats and dogs. Um, so how are we gonna keep people from stopping at that southeast corner? And queuing up behind that? And how are we gonna get them to actually use the entire east side for drop-off?
Without speaking out of turn, I think I may have to rely on some of the Denisco staff as well, but the. Parking, as we have viewed the site, you know, in its existing conditions, the staff and faculty. Um, play a large role in managing traffic on the site, and I. Are expecting that they will continue to do so, so that as parents come in, they'll be encouraged to go to the head of the line, if you will. And queue up behind them to form that queue along that bay.
Okay. Well, in our discussions with uh staff at the school, it is understood that there will continue to be staff controlling functions. Um, we have made at least one accommodation that there is a pull-off at the south end here, which is a sort of flush curb. With area for four cars for um a noted need of students that require additional time. Uh, need to be settled before they brought into the building. need to be settled before they brought into the building, which could potentially clog the queue. So there is an extra accommodation made here at the south. But, you know, as you allude to, parents have to participate and park and cooperate and they don't always model the best behavior, but we have given them the opportunity to do that.
Okay. And am I correct that if I don't want to go all the way to the south end, I can cut off the loop by going along your tabled east-west connection there that's north of the solar panels?
Uh. David, to the extent during drop-off hours, we were not going to, the staff is not going to allow, currently cars are guided through the parking lot with cones. I would imagine that will be blocked off in a similar fashion during peak drop-off and pickup areas times, I should say. Part of the reason that that is there is partially to slow traffic, as David mentioned, but also there is a community asset here that doesn't require the entire parking lot. So there's that shortcut there. It's designed for flexibility, but we certainly have safety as the highest priority and, and those sort of shortcuts, the dropping off in the parking lot. We can't prevent it, but we will do everything to discourage.
Okay. Uh, Johanna.
Thanks, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but would you be able to just trace with a cursor? Like if you are a parent in the morning, driving your kid to school, what is the route that they take?
Yeah, Tim's.
Coming in the north entrance, turning right, going into the west lane, coming all the way down and following the outside loop. So the right lane within the parking lot is not part of the loop, but traveling south in this lane and then traveling north in a drive aisle, which is two lanes wide for the entire extent.
So I was going to jump in, this is Nate. I, I, I really echo Doug's point about queuing and parents. I don't understand, you know, especially in inclement weather, why someone would drive another 200 feet beyond the drop-off to drop their kids off there and not, you know, at the entrance when they're there. And so I think it's going to be confusing and I don't know, you know, if you couldn't route traffic the other way. So I just think that that's, that'll be a, you know, a management issue that I, you know, to have staff, you might need multiple staff out there that are just constantly waving cars along. Seems, you know, to a burden to put on, on staff, you know, to, when it could be that it functions differently.
I think in the mornings, you generally have people coming in and just dropping off, so it's not so much an issue in the morning with queuing up. It's the queuing up in the afternoon for the pickup where we're lining the parents up to, to pick up their child in the afternoon. And the other reason for not reversing the flow there is we get into crossing of traffic patterns with people trying to get in and out, you're crossing traffic. So we were trying to avoid that as well. So by providing the queuing onsite, we're getting motor vehicles and parents off of Southeast Street and onto the site and then they would queue up. So it really becomes the afternoon situation where we're looking to park the cars and allow parents to pick up their students as opposed to the morning where it's typically a quick drop-off and they're out.
Hmm. Okay. Jesse, you're the next hand, I see.
Great, thanks. I was just going to reiterate Johanna's question from earlier. Is there an intentional design for bikers? How will they flow into the traffic pattern? And where is there other bike racks involved somewhere?
There are bike racks, Bill. I don't know if you want to jump in and talk about the location of the bike racks there too, here and here.
So what we've done to accommodate the bicycles is at the north and south entrances, there are sidewalks that come in off the street. There are 10 feet wide that accommodate walkers and bicyclists. And on the south entrance, as they come in, they follow the entrance drive and then they cross the road. At that point, they'll need to get off their bicycle and they'll cross the road, then make their way to the front entrance and there's bike racks right to the left in that location. And then if you're coming from the north, you're coming in north of the entrance drive, that's a 10-foot wide sidewalk for bikers and for people walking. They continue down and then there's bike racks or right to the left of playground, right in that location.
All right, Jesse, any other questions? Okay. On that subject, are, is there any covered bicycle racks or provisions inside the building, like a shower for staff who might want a bicycle to work and show up and need a shower?
There is not a shower in the building and the bicycle racks are not covered.
Okay. Janet, you are next.
Um, I wonder in that spot, if you're coming in from the south where you, the bikes have to cross to the, to the to the other sidewalk, is, if that could be sort of raised or kind of marked off in some way? I know there's just buses coming in, but you know, anytime you have little kids who are a little clueless and any kind of vehicle, it seems like anything that would slow that down would be something to alert the bus driver, like, oh, I'm going to slow down, not that they're going that fast. So I just wonder if there's some way to put some lines there or raise like a table, so it's like the vehicle knows they have to slow down. Um, the other thing is, is in terms of queuing, like, that's a problem at every school where if there's 40 parents trying to pick up a kid, at the same time, there, there are lines everywhere. So I, I appreciate the problem of queuing. It's, you know, we have a bus system that will take you everywhere. There's lots of kids who go to after-school activities now and the parents are, and guardians are driving them. But I just, I don't know how you get around it when you have, you know, one exit or entrance to the building and 40 cars. And I think people who are driving just have to wait or park, go pick up their kid and walk back to their car. So that's a problem at Fort River now at half the size. I'm sure it's a problem at Wildwood and stuff. So I just think, you know, the more our parents are driving, the more they're sitting in lines, you know.
All right. Janet, I actually think, think it's a little, it's sort of exacerbated here because the drive does not go along the the length, the, the primary frontage of the building. You know, there's really just a very short moment where the drive is close to the building. So I think it's going to be worse than, than Wildwood and probably Fort River.
Well, the way Fort River operates now is you come in through the south drive and you go into the side parking lot. You never go to the front of the building and you have to go around and there's a staff person sitting there waiting for you to get your kid out. And so there is this very strange kind of, it's, you know, I think that one of the many principles at Fort River really wanted to separate the kids away from the buses and so instituted that as a safety thing. So there is a whole group of people waiting to pick up a kid or to drop a kid off at the side entrance and there's a staff person there. It, Fort River has sort of a little side entrance that's in the front, but on the side. And so I just think the more people using their car, the more people waiting, you know.
Okay. All right, well, I know I'll never be in any of these lines, so. Um, Johanna, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's possible that we just can't come up with an ideal here, but there, I guess I have, I just want to voice a couple of concerns. I think it is really not ideal to have the bicycles and pedestrians crossing the street where the buses come in. I think we are trying as a town to encourage non-car traffic and so covered bike racks go a long way to making that happen. If folks from the design team haven't been at Fort River for a morning drop-off, I encourage you to go and observe it sometime because basically they don't let kids, they don't let parents drop off their kids until a certain time. And so even in the morning, there are often dozens of cars queued up, you know, snaking around the south parking lot and into the driveway just to drop off their kid. And hang on, I had one more thing. Ah, just need to find my notes. And then I, I kind of, I'll admit, I kind of hate the fact that the pedestrians and the cyclists are smushed together onto the same infrastructure. I feel like it it, it ends up like, I don't know, right? In regular society, cyclists are supposed to share the road with the cars and you're not supposed to ride your bike on the sidewalk. And I just think it like continues mixed messages in no man's land for cyclists. When that's actually, I think, a problem we have the opportunity to solve. So those are my concerns.
David, you have any response to any of that?
Most of the site design is, fell under others. We didn't get involved as much with the bike and pedestrian layout. So I think certainly we can provide, you know, I, I will make a couple of comments as a traffic engineer, looking at it. It, it's difficult. We want to get the crossing, for example, on the bus loop. Raising that, we, I know we did discuss it and consider it, it is a managed entrance, if you will, that would be, that is intended to be signed for buses only. So we are talking about the buses and that type of a vehicle only, which should be intimately aware of the situation and setting that they're coming into. You can put a raised crosswalk there. It will add a further traffic calming device, but it's something that the buses are going to have to traverse over. So we can go either way with, with that, I guess. The actual bike and pedestrian layout and walkways that were designed by others on the Denisco team. Yeah, I think they can probably better respond.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a comment on the, on the, on the path of travel on the southern end. We actually looked at putting the path on the north side, but there are a lot of existing trees right very close to the curb that provide a nice buffer for that house. So that's why we kept the sidewalk on the southern side and are crossing the road. We could put a raised table in that location. If we did that, it would require us to install a catch basin at that location in order to mitigate the water that would back up in, in that location. And then there's, you know, philosophically, how do we deal with cars and bicycles onsite? And having younger kids potentially coming to the site, I would prefer personally to have them in a sidewalk situation than part of the road system, just because of the conflicts with bicycles and cars for younger people. For adults, it's easier to manage, I think, but the children, it's much more difficult.
All right. Uh, I guess on that subject, David, you made one comment that the bicyclists would need to dismount when they crossed the road. Is that just good practice from a traffic engineering point of view, or is that something we actually need to expect children to do?
I actually did not make that comment. I think Tim did when he was explaining it, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, I think.
Then maybe it was of no consequence.
Somebody, I did not make that comment, but.
Okay, sorry, never mind. Uh, Bruce.
Um, a couple of things. You should remember that we have a fairly substantial array of solar panels over the parking in that end of the, the, the site. And to your point, Doug, when it's raining heavily, um, this is an unusual feature because we don't usually have sheltered parking. And my guess is that in the situations like that, people would make use of that in ways that, you know, we will have to, we, we can't yet fully predict. But I, I think we should remember that we have this unusual feature, a rain-sheltered parking area. Um, I have a question related to the bikes as well. I noticed that down in the, uh, uh, south of the building entry, uh, there are the bike locations there. I counted them. There are eight of them, as far as I can, or at least accommodation for eight bikes. And I didn't notice or count the, the, the provisions to the north of the building, but it's uh, but nonetheless, when I counted those, I had one assumption and one question. The, the assumption was that there's not really many of them and certainly they're not sheltered. It seems to me that there is a rather minimal expectation that anybody is going to ride. And, and I kind of assumed that it would be staff that would ride and not kids, but of course, kids may decide to ride. I don't know. The question is, what is the basis for determining the number of bicycle accommodation? I mean, I know we've, we've got data on how you figured out the number of parking for cars. How did you figure out the number of parking for bicycles? Because it seems to me to be remarkably small, if I remember what my school looked like. You know, 70 years ago, or whenever it was.
There's actually eight bike racks south and nine bike racks north. Uh, they accommodate two bicycles each rack, so there's one on each side.
Okay, so that's. So that's 16 and, and 18, whatever that is, uh, 35 or so. Uh, and we've got 275 plus staff, so uh, we've probably got one to 20, more or less in terms of humans that are coming and staying at the building. Um, I know some of those kids are so young that you would need extra wheels on the bike for them to be actual ride, but still, it's, it's not many. Is there a, you've, so the answer is that we've got somewhere between 30 and 40 capacity to accommodate somewhere between 30 and 40 bicycles. How did you figure that out? How did you figure that was enough? Or how do you figure that you would allocate that number and not 10 or 100?
We were given a number from the school staff.
Uh, okay. Okay, well, I guess that ended.
You know, there's certainly room to, to accommodate more.
It seems to me that we should expect that there would be provision for not only accommodating more, but also for for, for in, in the future for the, to provide shelter. I know providing bathrooms and so forth is a good idea too, particularly if staff are going to use them. But that may be a, that's, that's another order of magnitude, but figuring out how we could double or triple the bicycle accommodation. I mean, if we just look at schools in other countries and perhaps, I know I used to look at buildings in Europe and so forth, and that was 20 or 30 years ago, and we're doing similar things now that they were doing a long time before us. And if the same is true of, of non-vehicular transport, we should be ready for that or at least not do things that would stop it from happening. I don't know whether we can, would, how we would condition this, but I certainly would like to see the, the possibility of readily doubling or tripling that bicycle accommodation and, and, and sheltering some of it.
All right, all right, Bruce. You know, I mean, as I look at the plan, I can see what look likes opportunities to, you know, to extend or install bicycle racks that would just increase capacity. I guess you'll need to think about whether we should make some sort of condition and you know, maybe require a revised site plan that shows locations for future additional bike racks or something like that. Janet.
I have sort of a general comment that there's a lot of space on this site. I mean, there's a lot of space to the south of, you know, the bus entrances. Um, there's some nice landscape space between the southern part of the parking lot and then the bus lanes, which I'm sure almost no one will ever use because no one uses it now. Um, so I, you know, I think of, when I think about where we could put things or extra parking or things like that, I just think, oh, let's, maybe you can just move it around a little, which could, of course, drive the designers insane, but I just think there's a lot of flexibility on the site. Um, I have a question, a really specific question by the entrance, the southern entrance, like there's, there, I don't know if this is just intentional or not, but there seems to be like a path all the way along the bus drop-off, but then it stops and it's green. Um, right by the building, is that intentional? Do you mean to stop the walkway there? Um, right by the building, is that intentional? Do you mean to stop the walkway there? Yeah, that's.
I I should, that is a drawing error. This error, this square is paved. It is not green, uh, and it was not intentional sleight of hand. It's just a graphic error. This is where the transformer, the dumpsters, um. Uh, it's it's the service area, uh, the maintenance facilities.
Okay.
Doors here, and this is all paved, and there's a screen wall and planting that protected from the entrance.
Oh, okay. And then the 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 entrance to is to the right then where the buses drop the kids off, right?
Correct. There is a door right here for student access, which is uh walking through a stair that takes you immediately to all three floors.
So if someone came at that entrance and made a a right-hand turn towards the parking lot or just towards um Southeast Street, would they, would they just walk into a building or is there no sidewalk along the road there? In that square?
No, it it's continuously paved from here to here.
Okay, okay, forget it then.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. Okay, here's a couple. Chris, go ahead.
So I just wanted to mention that we have a full-size set of drawings here in the office, and it's really good to look at. So if anybody wants to come in and look at that set, um, I'd be happy to spend time with them. Um, because it does show a lot of details, and it's hard to see some of the details on the set that um, you received in your packet. And it's also hard to, um, you know, manipulate the computer to see everything because it kind of loads slowly. So um, feel free to let me know if you want to come in and look at the big set, and it may answer, you know, a lot of your questions.
And Chris, um, assuming we don't get through everything tonight, um, when are you thinking we would continue this hearing to, so that we kind of have a sense of how long it will be before, you know, during which we can think about coming in to look at the set uh and it not be too late to bother?
I would have to ask Pam for her advice on that. We have upcoming meetings on January thirty-first, February seventh, and February twenty-first. The January thirty-first um meeting is uh going to be about Hickory Ridge, and I expect that's going to take some time, and we'll also probably want to talk about University Drive. But I believe that February seventh would be a possibility for continuing this public hearing. Um, and then there's also February twenty-four, twenty-first, as I said.
Okay. Do you or do you know if uh we are on the project's critical path at this point? Is there urgency to us getting through our review?
So uh, the early site package, which is clearing the ground uh south of the construction fence, is already on the street, going out to bid. The contract will be awarded in February. That being said, the design for the final situation, uh, all all layout of everything of that project will go out to bid in July. Um, there are certain deadlines that we have to meet in terms of MSBA review and a lot of other things, uh. But uh our general position is that the sooner the better. But obviously, we are happy to work with you uh on your schedule.
Okay. And um. I guess in terms of the the two special permit uh applications that that we know about, you know, the the height and the fill. Um, I assume uh if we were to deny those, that would basically blow up the project. Is that right?
That is a fair statement.
Okay. No pressure. Uh, Bruce.
Uh, I've got quite a few questions, uh, but uh let me ask one first that is relates to the traffic. We've looked at the way the traffic will eventually be managed, and in my mind, it seems to be uh rather thoughtful and somewhat ingenious and certainly um better than was feared when this site was uh first being thought of in comparison to, say, Wildwood. But um, there is a moment in time, uh, basically, um, between the time when the school building is uh completed, the building itself is operational as far as having students in it, and the period when uh the existing building has been torn down and the north entrance essentially is not available. So um, I I wanted just to find out what's the plan for that period? How long is that period? And what's the plan for that period? Um, it's obviously going to be suboptimal, but I think we should know how suboptimal.
So in the period after the school is built and they are demolishing um the existing Fort River School and constructing the parking lot north of this line, um, there are accommodations for temporary connection between, which will allow half of the parking that is constructed to be used and the drop-off loop to the south. That being said, there will be a deficit of a good number of cars uh for the new building. Um, and we are working with the district to figure out how that will happen, whether it's um part of this is constructed during the phase one, and it will exist in the state of a binder course, but not totally finished, but usable for parking for staff. Or if for a few months, staff has to be parking off-site. Uh, we understand that it is a a difficult and logistically uh problematic situation for September to potentially December of twenty twenty-six, but it's something that we will work out with the district.
All right, Bruce.
Can I keep going?
Sure.
Um, there's a generator uh uh down on the uh, well, near that white building there. Um. This is a net zero energy building, uh, but we, the one thing that's not uh non-fossil fuel is the generator. Um, it's going to be fairly close to residential uh properties, um, but uh there's apparently uh um, some kind of sound enclosure. So I just wanted to uh understand what uh uh, what the what the what the DB level of this generator is likely to be, how often it's likely to be in operation, presumably that hopefully never. But it's also, it's got to be tested regularly, so that'll probably be the major operation. Uh, so what is the expected uh times of operation? How loud is it? And what is the sound enclosure that's uh referenced?
It will have to be exercised once a week, I believe. Uh, I I can get you the other information. I don't want to give you a decibel number and be wrong. Um, Rick, I don't know if you know.
I I don't have offhand, but we have we have an acoustic consultant that is also looking at off-site uh acoustic uh issues from all the equipment, and the generator enclosure is is one of them. And uh, it would, it will be sufficiently quiet and meet those uh requirements, and the, there is flexibility as to when it's exercised, so it's whenever they decide to to run it, if a neighbor complains, and I'd be surprised if they did because they will likely not hear it run. It's it's a, it's a diesel engine uh is is what the sound would be. And uh they could certainly it's on an automatic timer for for the exercising, and it can be done at any time, and it can be done at a time when it's uh not uh obtrusive at all.
Okay, what about the sound enclosure? It looks like the building itself is going to perform some sort of blocking at least.
Well, in the, in one direction, the building will block it. Uh, another direction, we have fencing around it, and the acoustic enclosure itself is a mitigating factor for the for the engine noise.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, Doug, shall I continue?
I think so, sure.
Um, we've got comments from the fire department, and there are they they really come in the form of what I would have thought looked like conditions. There's stipulations, and there's, well, I can't count them all out, but there looks very close to fifteen or more. And uh and I'm not sure how this uh, how we're expected to deal with this, or whether we don't need to at all. Um, one, one thought that I had was, are we supposed to make a condition of any approval that all of these uh uh requirements in the fire department memo shall be met? Um, and uh, so I guess I could start by asking, uh, has the design team uh seen this, reviewed this, and are there any uh uh, because, for example, two C, it says a fire hydrant, no, it doesn't. I beg your pardon. It says a hydrant shall be added to the south side of the new school and shall be within a hundred feet of the new fire department connection. Um, was this, is this, for example, uh part of the current scope, or is this an additional item? And are there any other items on the fire department uh transmittal that are a surprise uh and will cause difficulty? Or is this uh, as far as the design team concerned, something that is uh more or less perfunctory and that we you'll just make sure it all happens?
Um, we have seen the memo, uh, that the result of many of these items is a meeting that we have multiple meetings that actually we've had with our engineers and the fire department. We've discussed the locations of hydrants, um, the locations of knockboxes, adjustable panels, and all of that has been discussed for them, and the uh, best location in the building from their point of view, um. I don't want to say it's perfunctory, but we we are certainly going to do all of this. And one thing that they have requested in here is a stamped turning movement analysis. We've done some, but we will do a final one that makes sure all of their equipment uh gets the three hundred and sixty-degree access to the building that this site is designed to provide.
Okay. Um. Well, we can discuss amongst the board, I guess, how we handle this, but it doesn't sound like it's, it's it's problematic in any way. Uh, Doug, shall I continue?
Yes, Bruce.
Um. The uh we have uh something that hasn't been shown or discussed or mentioned, but certainly exists, albeit uh below ground and you can't see it, um, is the uh so-called geothermal well. It's basically the ground connection for the system that's heating and cooling the whole building, which is taking heat from and delivering heat back to, depending on the season. I think it would be good for us to know where that is and what the extent of it is and and uh what it means to have one.
Sure, um, south of the building, east of the entrance uh at Stair B that we've been talking about, essentially from here to here, there is an array of eighty-four wells that will be about five hundred feet deep, um, with a steel casing and a polyethylene loop in them, which will bring all of that piping back to a vault, which is south of the building. All of this is completely underground and unseen um, and unlikely ever to be accessed. Um, and then that system will be connected to a heat pump in the uh mechanical room on the third floor. Uh, so this system will function as a heat sink. Uh, in the summer, heat will be pumped into the ground, and winter um, heat will be extracted from uh the relatively constant uh surface temperature of the earth. Um, and then all of that, it will group up to a water-to-water heat exchanger, heat pump in the building. It's eighty-four wells, two hundred and seventy tons, I believe.
And is it a balanced annual load?
Uh, yes. Uh, I mean, yeah, as you're alluding to, the geothermal systems, if you're drawing too much heat or putting too much into heat, eventually they become less efficient. Uh, but it is a balanced annual load. We've had uh Tim Ruth, uh, Wellspring is our uh engineer who was handling the design of the system.
Okay. More, Bruce?
Yes, uh, one or two, let's say. Um, in, I can't remember which drawing it is, Tim, but in the uh crosswalk at the uh southern end of the uh parking area, just south of the uh array structure, there is a note that says detectable warning panel, and then it says typical. So first of all, I don't know what a detectable warming warning panel is. And because it's this typical, I imagine there's more than one of them around the place. So could you tell me what it is and where they are and why they are?
It is the tactile surface at any crosswalk, and maybe Bill can explain it, but it's the bumps on the sidewalk as you cross the street, but I'm sure he'll give you a much more technical uh description.
I I got it now, yes, okay.
And then also in areas where there's flush curbing, for instance, uh, along the van drop-off zone, we have a flush condition with bollards. The bollards protect uh the pedestrians. That curb is flush, and it gives someone who is disabled or has trouble seeing, um, it gives them a warning that they're about to enter a vehicular zone.
Thank you. And if I may, Doug, one more?
Certainly, Bruce. Let's get through them.
Um, the existing athletic field has light poles which are to be removed. Um, and uh um, I've uh, I I've mentioned to the uh building committee a number of times, I say, what's going to happen to those? And I I get vague answers, which basically indicate that people aren't terribly interested, I think, or concerned. Of course, understandably, this uh huge project, and there's all sorts of fish to fry, and 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 silly old uh forty-year-old wooden poles uh don't quite uh uh pass muster or get get a gurnsey. But the the I think I know that these are a valuable resource. They don't look like it, but they're probably about, I don't know, twelve or fifteen inches in diameter at the base. They probably go into the ground, but it's only the above-ground portion that I'm interested in. And they come up, I don't know, forty-plus feet high, maybe fifty. And there's half a dozen of them, and it seems to me that uh the wood resource in this is valuable. It's probably, as it often is, poles that were put in that time ago, but the quality of the lumber is much better than we could source today, and that we shouldn't just trash them. And I would like to think that uh these poles were going to be uh cut down, um, I mean, lifted and cut and lowered down, perhaps sectioned into two uh or three sixteen-plus-foot pieces and uh taken to the perimeter of the site and stacked and made available uh to someone. Um, uh, I will probably propose a condition to achieve something like that, but I want to uh just uh have a uh, the 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 design team to say, what are the, are there any problems with that? I mean, uh, uh, you possibly know more about what the quality of this wood is than I do, so is what I'm is is what I see as a resource uh and something that can be salvaged? Um, is this um? Am I looking at, i- is this something that's worth pursuing, or should we uh just let the dumpster take care of it?
Uh, my father-in-law was a lineman for electric and gas, and you'd be surprised what they could make out of old poles. Uh, but we, I had a very pointed conversation with both uh Rupert and Guilford about what they wanted to retain on-site. And as far as those uh light poles, uh, the the lights themselves and all the controllers are being saved for future reuse. We discussed the notion that uh, the poles could be, you know, the part that's not buried. Uh, you know, you could end up with a ten-foot shorter pole, and does the town have any use for them? And while they have taken delivery of any unused curb and things like that, the town has expressed no interest in finding a use for those poles. And I believe that a light pole is is uh treated against rot, and I don't think that you can saw it for lumber, but that's just uh a supposition on my part. I've seen a lot of uh utility poles leaching tar and creosote. So I don't, I think that if somebody had a use for them as as poles would be number one. Unfortunately, the Unfortunately, the town's not ready to take on storing those for future use anywhere.
Um, uh, what I did tonight on the way back is I called a friend of mine, Tom Harris, who's, uh, one of the regional, uh, uh, entities that fussucks around and, and, and gets stuff like this and sources them up and sells it, uh, sells the lumber back into, uh, into, into the, uh, into the cabinet industry and various others and, and at a, at a astonishing price. So if these are not treated, um, they're probably worth something and obviously apparently not to the town, but that doesn't mean that they're not worth something to somebody. I think, Doug, what I will do is I will, in the next two or three weeks, but to whether the, when to, up until when we can continue this meeting, if we do, which we will, I'm sure, uh, I'll see if I can find, uh, somebody who's interested in this. And if I can find somebody who's interested in these poles, I'm going to propose a condition, uh, that, uh, commits the project to at least, uh, putting them in a place where that party can collect them.
Okay, Bruce?
I think that's it for me now.
Okay. Thank you for your apparently very close review of the drawings. Janet, you've been very patient.
Thank you. Um, I have a punch list too. Um, I look at the parking lot in the north part and, you know, cognizant that this is going to be many more, um, so the larger school than what we're used to seeing. Um, and I picture like after-school events and, you know, little, little siblings and going to events and running through a parking lot that has rows upon rows of cars, but there's no, I, there's no islands, there's no trees, there's nothing to slow kids down. I'd be happy then for a little kid to, you know, basically run into a granite curb, fall on some dirt, then run across, you know, four lanes, you know, several lanes of traffic and park cars. And so, you know, I, I know there's a waiver of the condition for, um, having, you know, islands and landscaping. I don't think this is a safe parking lot for small children and, um, I just, you know, it's just, it's a lot of rows of cars. It's, you know, so, you know, a lot of traffic coming in and out. And there's no, you know, all these cars will be parked and some little kid could just dart out and no one's going to see them. And so I would love to see this redesigned or, you know, in a way that, you know, the current parking lot doesn't have, um, it sort of splits in two. There is a granite curb with some dirt that divides it and, you know, the kids can, or adults kind of step up onto it, stop for a minute and look and then step down. And so I would love to see this parking lot a little more attractive, following the code a little better. Um, the trees would be nice to prevent sort of a heat island effect. I would love to see a solar canopy, but that may be way in the future. So I just don't think this design is particularly safe with so many parked cars and sort of an easy way for young children to run kind of unseen between cars and nothing really, no place to stop. Um, the next thing is, um, you know, there's also a request for a waiver of an, like a screening of the homes. And I don't really understand that because it seems to me, um, you know, this is going to be an attractive school. A parking lot, not so attractive. You know, I think it'd be relatively easy to put in, um, you know, an evergreen screening around the homes, but, you know, to kind of give them year-round no view of the parking lot and things like that. Um, so those are two kind of landscaping things I'd like to see in the next round. Um, and then in terms of the, the, the special permit that you haven't asked for, for the parking lot canopy, I think you could, if you're just trying to put the canopy in, I think you could put it over that kind of cross-piece walkway or you can just add it later, like as I remember the bylaw and voting on it in town meeting. You know, net zero doesn't mean to, doesn't mean that the site has to produce every, you know, ion or whatever of electron of energy, but that you can actually buy green energy also to fill that gap. And so I would see if, you know, extending the canopy a little bigger over the, the parking area, um, to the north with the idea that it would go in later or maybe, you know, you could put it in, you know, when, you know, like some other, you know, either put it in to cover that kind of walkway or just add it later when you're working on the parking lot. So I just think the net zero thing, like having everything turnkey jammed on that little site may not be the best thing, particularly for the neighbors who are in the backyard who are now just staring at, you know, a lot of, um, solar arrays, which I know from being on the solar bylaw working group isn't everybody's favorite thing. And so I would just, those are sort of things I think you might look at for the next round.
All right. Janet, uh, I'm going to ask you one question about your first comment about the parking lot. Um, it, it, at least the way I read it, it looks like there's four rows of cars.
I think so. It's hard for me to see.
And, and that reminds me that that's basically the same as the parking lot at Mill River, which I've never really felt like it was terribly unsafe.
How many, how many spaces are here?
It is four rows of cars. It's a hundred and seventy-five spaces.
All right. So, I mean, it's definitely longer than Mill River, that's for sure. But I, but in terms of the width and the direction that people would be walking, you know, to get to the fields, it's not that different. And anyway, I just kind of mentioned it. Um, I also have wondered about those waivers for the, uh, for the parking, um, you know, in terms of the islands and that kind of thing. Um, you know, coming kind of on the heels of our conversation about Hickory Ridge, where there was also a conversation about getting rid of some of the, or waiving some of the parking requirements. Um, you know, it, it starts to feel like when we have a town project, uh, some of the parking requirements are sort of optional. And, um, I'm not sure, I, I really am, I'm not really sure, I'm, I'm comfortable creating, uh, creating that precedent. So, um, anyway.
Yeah, and there's, I think there's space, you know, to put some, you know, some landscaping in and making it more attractive. It could be also a place where water goes and the trees help hold the water on the site, you know? Um, but I just, I just, it just seems really big and I just picture kids scurrying. And I understand what you're saying about Mill River, but you know, this parking lot's going to be used at night for school events or, you know, night, which is sometimes four-thirty in the afternoon. Um, and, you know, parents are distracted and, you know, kids run.
Right. Um, I guess, uh, Tim, I, Janet's comment also makes me wonder, uh, for the green sort of swale that's between that main parking area and, uh, drop-off drive, is that easily traversed by a pedestrian? It, it's not so steep and slow.
That's, that's not, that's not easily, uh, traversed by a pedestrian because that whole zone is depressed slightly in order to hold water.
But there is a sidewalk that extends the full length of that sand filter and swale from the north end of the parking lot. So if you have gotten from the parking spaces to that green zone, you are on a safe, separated sidewalk that will bring you all the way to the crosswalk to the entrance.
Right. I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is there's, there's a second, uh, desire line, so to speak. You know, for, not for people who are headed to the main entrance of the school, but for people who are headed to the ball field for their, you know, their softball league or, or the ultimate frisbee league that's happening on Saturdays. And so that green swale is actually a barrier for a pedestrian. Is that right?
Well, it is, but there's two connectors. So the northern part of the parking area, which I would imagine where, where most people would be parking, there's a sidewalk that takes you towards the east and there is not a, there is a crosswalk there. It's not shown on the drawing. It takes you over to the fields.
Uh-huh. And then there's one at the south end.
Yes.
Yeah. How difficult would it be to put one in the middle?
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please, Janet.
Uh, so the, the upper sand filter is about two feet deep and the side slopes are around three to one. So though it's like a kid, uh, it's only going to have water in it during a rain event and for, you know, twenty-four, forty-eight hours after a heavy rain event, kids will go through it. Um, we're not totally expecting them not to. It's not so deep that they can't. It's,
Okay.
They'll run up and they'll run down and we don't really want them to because it's planted and, you know, it's, the, the goal of it is to function, but we won't be surprised when they do.
Okay.
And, and the slope of it, to clarify, is not sloping immediately down from the edge. There's a flat area, uh, just to describe the profile, there's, there's not a sidewalk on the, on the drop-off side, but there's a flat area.
Uh-huh.
The dimensions of which maybe Janet or Steve can, but it's, 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 it's how it's built.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, just looking at your rendering, it's not obvious that that's, you know, uh, got some gradient to it. So, okay, uh, Janet, go ahead. You're, you're, you're amused.
That's basically it. I just think, um, planting screenings, slow, you know, some, make this parking lot more attractive and safer for people to move through. Um, you know, if you have a kind of a little island, you know, like I've stood on those islands waiting for cars to go by. You know, you feel a little better when you're up, you know, up in the air a little bit. Um, but I just, I just think, you know, let's follow the bylaw and make that a little prettier. I mean, the rest of the site looks really nice and all of a sudden there's this big asphalt expanse. I just don't think it's safe and I don't think it's particularly attractive. And I think you have space to do stuff with it, you know, um.
Can I make a comment relative to the screening?
Sure, Bill.
Um, when we designed the parking lot, we took great care in not disturbing the buffer between the parking lot and the property line. So the trees that are, that are currently in that area, they all remain. We can look at it, but I think it's going to be hard for us to put a, an evergreen screen in, um, without disturbing the trees that are existing that are there. So that's why we didn't show any screening in there, in that area, because we preserved what was there. Uh, but we certainly can take a look to see if we can add, uh, some screening in that area without disturbing the existing vegetation.
No, I think it's a great idea and I, I'll go back and look myself because I'm not sure what it looks like in the winter. I mean, I think there are evergreens in there and it is, it's very,
There are some, yes.
There's a real separation between those houses and the school, and I think it's a nice thing to preserve.
Yep. And there is also a berm, which I'll admit this is the first time I've been at, when there were not leaves on the trees for the probably southern two-thirds of the lot. So, uh, one of the acceptable ways to mitigate, uh, in the code is a berm that is at least three feet height to block headlights and that exists, uh, if you look from the south end of the parking lot to at least to the middle and probably a little bit more.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that again.
If, if I could just add, uh, looking at that whole area that's north of the school, there seems to be a lot of real estate up there and it seems like you slide things around. Uh, but the width of that athletic field, every foot, east and west, north and south, was hard-fought so that they could do overlays of alternate frisbee in the various games. Then you get to the east and you get into the, uh, replication areas and not wanting to, uh, not being able to get farther into the, uh, wetland jurisdictional area. We've got a, a two-lane access road that we want to have well spaced from the edge of the playfield and then the sand filter has a certain width. So when the design team says, we'll look at seeing if we can fit some planting in there, moving everything over ten feet isn't the solution to getting it there because every, it seems funny to say with that width, but everything that everybody was advocating for is jammed in there.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else, Janet?
No. Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. All right, um, I guess, let's see, we only have two attendees left and I think they are both for our next item on the agenda. So I'm not even going to ask for a public comment at this time. Bruce, actually, Rick, you got your hand up first. Okay, Bruce?
Um, I was simply going to move the continuation to, um, if Pam has got the answer.
I think it was February seventh, wasn't it?
Uh, move continuation of the public hearing to, uh, February the seventh, uh, at, um, six forty-five, I suppose. I think that's all, uh, I think that's all that's necessary.
Yeah, Chris, does, does that, uh, six forty-five work for you? Should we make it a little bit sooner so that we don't have to wait to, uh, you know, get to the clock to six forty-five?
I think we usually have public hearings scheduled for six thirty-five and we may not get to them right away.
Okay.
Get to them sooner than six forty-five. So I would say six thirty-five is a good time.
Six thirty-five is fine.
Okay, so, uh, I'm happy to second your motion, Bruce. Um, any, 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 uh, comments from the board that you need to make tonight? As opposed to in a couple of weeks? Not seeing any. All right, then why don't we, uh, run through a roll call to continue to February seventh at six thirty-five? Bruce?
Hi.
All right. My list. Jesse?
Hi.
Uh, Janet?
Hi.
Uh, Johanna?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. All right, the motion passes, five in favor, two absent. The time now is nine nineteen. So thank you, Dinesco and all your, uh, associated consultants. Appreciate your work on this and, uh, we hope to see many of you at least, uh, in a few weeks.
You will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll now go to the next item on the agenda, which is actually old business. Topic's not reasonably anticipated. Do we have any old, any old business? No, we do not. Uh, Janet?
Janet, Mike.
I, it's actually, it's a, it's not old business. It's a, it's a question about, um, I was wondering when Dodson Flinker is going to start its consulting work on the design review guidelines for downtown? Is there kind of a work plan? And then, um, a very strong suggestion that maybe we put this on the planning board website because I think it's going to have a lot of interest in people and, um, you know, listed as a current project and maybe some way people can glue in or, I don't know, offer comments or just see what's going on. Um, I just think there's going to be a lot of interest in this. So, but the first question is, when does it start and what do they do? What are they doing?
It started today and Nate can talk about it if he wants to, but, um, I, I believe that their task is to try to sort out a schedule that is slightly different from the schedule that they had proposed in their response to the RFP because of some constraints that we have with one of our grants. So, um, they're going to be moving head, moving ahead to, uh, propose a work plan. Um, we do have an idea that we want to put, um, this project on our town website. Um, we haven't quite, um, decided that yet, but Engage Amherst, um, is a subscription and it is renewed every year and so this project is a, at least, uh, it is a two-year project. So we're not sure that Engage Amherst is going to be the right platform for that, but we haven't quite made that decision. But Nate may have more to offer on this topic because he's really the person in charge of the project.
Right?
Yeah, I think Dodson's, um, they're looking through existing conditions, um, documents. You know, they're coming up with a timeline and schedule, so we'll, we're meeting with them in a, um, two to three weeks to kind of, um, get that set up. They'd like to have a working group, uh, stakeholder group that they'd meet with, you know, four to five, six times. In addition to, you know, um, outreach meetings, so they, you know, they like to have kind of this stakeholder group meet with them initially and then throughout the process, um, to, um, work through ideas. um, to, um, work through ideas. And this is in addition to kind of the whole outreach, you know, phase. So they're hoping to do, you know, a cert, a visual preference survey, stakeholder meetings, public meetings, uh, different things, you know, um, this spring and into summer. And so, uh, you know, they're kind of outlining all that and we'll try to get that going in the next few weeks. As Chris mentioned, we do have a community planning grant for streetscape standards. We need to have a report, um, kind of in a rough draft by the end of June. And so their focus really is on kind of a visioning and community engagement. And then the streetscape piece, you know, um, have something going by July. And then, you know, continue working on both, you know, kind of the building and site design standards. And, you know, more kind of visioning and things throughout the summer and, you know, into the winter. And so, you know, I think it, we've given eighteen, an eighteen-month timeline. And so, you know, although it seems like it's a long time, you know, to kind of set it, yeah, I know, to put it all together and then have an iterative process where we review things and it, you know, um, it'll uh, go. So they have a, a pretty, they have a, a, you know, they have a timeline and a task, you know, a kind of a chart. And they're modifying that and we hope to kind of finalize that soon and then we can, uh, figure it out. I, I agree with Chris. I think the Engage Amherst may not, you know, we don't want to have a, put it on a platform that we'd have to migrate from. Um, so we'll probably put it on the web, on the, um, town's website under the planning department or planning board, wherever it can be linked multiple ways. Um, and then, you know, as documents get, um, you know, generated, they can be up there. We can try to figure out how we want to receive public comment. And, uh, yeah, so that's something where, where we discussed a little bit today. So we have a few, few things to have homework on for staff and they have some homework as well.
Okay.
You're muted, Janet.
Oh, Janet, yes, you are muted.
I think it'd be great to put on the planning department or planning board is like under the new projects thing. Because I think the new project we have is like what, eleven East Pleasant Street. And I, I know, you know, it'd be good to have a few places people could look for it. So.
Alright, maybe we'll hear and, hear an update at our next meeting. Or maybe two meetings from now. Alright, um, so that was it for old business. Now we'll move to new business. Time is nine twenty-four. First item is request for determination of applicability on Pelham Road.
I can speak to that. Um, I really just gave this to you because it's an interesting project. We don't always send you, um, the request for determination or we would be sending you things all the time. This is something that was received by the Conservation Commission and they're required to send um, material like this, this applicant, uh, to the planning board. But as I said, you know, many of these things are not of of interest to the planning board. Um, but this one I think is interesting because it's the remnants of an old coal gasification plant that was, um, located at the intersection of Pelham Road and the Fort River. I think it might have been on both sides of the road and, um, the town has been struggling with this for years, trying to, um, trying to remove any kind of contaminants and then monitor for, um, you know, what's happening to the contaminants. So this is really just a request for determination of applicability, which means that, um, the applicant is requesting, um, for the Conservation Commission to approve wetland limit lines in this vicinity. And then, um, I imagine they will be applying for notice of intent to put, um, soil boring locations. They want to locate thirteen soil borings. Um, and this will help them to determine how much of, uh, the, the material that is, uh, contaminated is still there. Um, you can see that there are two little huts, I guess, one on the south side of Pelham Road. Is that right? The south side, yeah. Um, is a little greenhouse and on the other side, there may be a structure as well. And it's also, um, got a chain link fence around part of it, I think. Um, but anyway, they're, they have been monitoring this for years, pretty much ever since I started working in the, in the planning department. And it's an interesting project to follow and I know you will see it when you drive down Pelham Road. It's nothing that you have to do anything with, but I just thought it would be interesting for you to know about it and to know that, um, the town is continuing to monitor these, um, this situation.
Alright. Well, then I guess I was mistaken that Tom Reedy was waiting for this project to come up. He was just enjoying our earlier conversation, I guess.
Oh, he, he may have been interested in the Fort River project because, um, his office is right next to Fort River. So he's a, in a butter. He may have been listening so he could get more information about the project.
Okay. Alright, uh, do we have any other new business?
None that I know of.
Alright. Any Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
None.
Any upcoming ZBA applications that we might be interested in?
I, I don't have any to share. I'm not sure if my other colleagues do.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Other than the ones that are required for the Fort River School, which we already tried.
Right. Um, okay, then moving on, upcoming SVP, SPR and SUB applications.
Nothing really. Nope.
Nothing new.
We haven't received anything.
Alright. Alright, then, uh, time is nine twenty-eight and we will go to the committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything from?
Oh, actually, uh, no, nothing to report on that, but, uh, I suddenly realize I have a question. Um, I, uh, can I, uh, this is jumping back to the previous, uh, business. Can I ask my question? It's about the, um, Olympia Drive project, which we approved, uh, almost a year and a half ago and, and the site has not been disturbed. And I wonder whether we know anything about why they have not moved forward uh, and whether they were intending perhaps to do something similar to what they did with Spring Street and, and redesign the thing to a whole lot, uh, you know, to a lot of different, uh, types of units. I, I, it suddenly occurred to me to ask that question. I hope that's in order, otherwise we can put it off until next time.
Well, you've asked the question. Chris, do you have, you know what's going on?
I haven't spoken with them about that project, um, in a long time. I don't know if either of my colleagues has spoken with them.
No, but I know they're busy, you know, with trying to finish up Spring Street and eleven to thirteen East Pleasant. So it might just be, uh, you know, and other things. There might be a, you know, order of priority and you know, I haven't heard that. It's not happening. I just think it's delayed with their other projects.
Good enough. No, nothing to report on, uh, PBPC.
Alright. I think that since our last meeting in December, uh, CPAC did meet and approved, uh, most of the projects that were uh, that applied for money this, this time around. Um, there was some trimming of budgets, most of it proposed by Dave Zomack and other folks at the town, uh, on town projects. Um, but it seemed like a pretty smooth process this, this year. Karen is not here to talk to us about the design review board. Chris, anything on CRC?
I understand that there's still, um, well, I should back up and say CRC has been repopulated. Um, it has, I think, four of the same members and one new member. So Jennifer Taub, Pam Rooney, Pat DeAngelis and who am I missing?
Mandy Jo.
Mandy Jo.
And the most, I shouldn't forget her. No, because she was the chair. Um, then at Fricka Ette is, uh, also joining. So, um, we haven't worked with them yet. I think that they did have a meeting recently and they're picking up the, I haven't worked with them yet, but, um, they're picking up the rental registration project and trying to move that forward.
And is the solar bylaw with that committee as well?
The solar bylaw is also with that committee, but again, they haven't, um, done any work on that one yet.
Okay, and is there any statutory uh, deadline for them to move that out of committee?
Yes, June.
Okay.
They were given a deadline of June, yep.
Great. Alright, um, I guess that's, that's all our committee and liaison reports. Uh, I, as chair, have no, no report tonight. Chris, Pam, any report from staff? Have you got a new staff member?
No, um, and I'm not sure. I don't think that, uh, it's been advertised yet. I did send it down to HR in December, so we're gonna have to.
Give them a nudge.
Shake them a, a bit, yep.
Right, let's get you some help. Okay, alright, well, we didn't quite make nine thirty, but the time is nine thirty-two. Uh, unless anybody else has any, uh, anything to say, we can adjourn. I will say, please do try to go and look at the drawings. I think that would be, I know I, I haven't done that yet and I feel the need after tonight's conversation, particularly all the good questions that Bruce noticed that I wouldn't have had a clue about, but, um.
Yeah, and I have to say that we didn't give you the whole set of drawings. We gave you about two-thirds of it because it was just too much of a monumental package. So, um, there may be things that would be enlightening to you. Like, I don't think I included the grading plants. People who look online can look at the grading plants, but I don't think I included them in the, in the paper packets. So looking at the drawings live and in full size is really a good, uh, good exercise.
I don't know, I, it's probably, uh, tell me if it's out of turn because we closed or continued the hearing, but would the Wildwood site have required as many special permits and waivers?
I think probably in the end it would have. Um, we didn't really scrutinize this project until fairly recently. So when the site was being chosen, you know, they were asking us, well, what kind of permits do you need? And the site hadn't been designed yet, so we didn't know that it was gonna be forty-three feet and we didn't know, you know, necessarily that it was gonna be in the FPC zoning district. And, you know, so there were a number of things that only came to light once the thing was designed. And so I think, uh, you know, as I said, we don't really scrutinize these projects until we get an application and then we really look at them closely. But before that, um, you know, our, our, our review is a more cursory review.
Right.
It would have been, uh, equivalently challenging from a traffic management point of view. The issues would have been different, but, uh, uh, they were similar, uh, in extent. Uh, the site is much more compact, so there would have been issues. And of course, it's a sloping site, quite extreme. Uh, there is a lot of fill on that site, actually, uh, uncompacted fill that the building would have been going over. I, I can imagine that, uh, I suppose that may not have manifested itself in, in, uh, permit related questions before us, but the challenges of those, of the Wildwood sites were considerable.
Given the zoning district, I think it would be the same in terms of height, you know, could be coverage setbacks.
Okay.
Fill, um, parking, so. You know, I just think that.
Had to design both sites and present them to the planning department for thorough scrutiny in order to know what kinds of permits might have been required for Wildwood.
Okay, well, I guess, I, you know, it's just sort of in the back of my mind, like, well, what, what choice do we have? We have to approve this. So. Okay.
So far as the fill is concerned, I think that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise we maybe be able to, the, the sort of things that Janet was pushing for, Rick, uh, pushed back. I mean, I, I have to say, this is an extraordinary, uh, uh, design team that they put together. I had my doubts initially. I, uh, I challenged Kathy on one or two points, but Denisco have demonstrated a just extraordinary, uh, commitment to this town and to this project, including Donna Denisco, who as the principal, I thought, well, she'll be there for the first little while, but Donna is at every meeting for two and a half years and doesn't look like stopping. Uh, they chase down every ferret, uh, uh, they, uh, respond to public, uh, comments and so forth. Um, considerably, assiduously, you know, carefully and stuff. But they're just, uh, they're just a wonderful, uh, uh, group of people and, uh, we're very fortunate to have them. That's my view, anyway.
Well, thank you for that endorsement. Alright, well, on that positive note, we can adjourn. Time is nine thirty-seven. Welcome back in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Chris? Can I ask you, can I ask you a question?
Sure.